It's 6:03 and I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm going to turn the meeting over at this moment to Dr. Burnham to confirm member access.
As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson Bertrand.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Archambault.
Yes.
Secretary Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording secretary, Ms. Sue Summers?
Yes.
Business manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy?
Yes.
Not sure if we have everybody here yet. Special Services Director, Ms. Juliana Hanscom. Food Service Director, Ms. Nadine Lorenzen. LHS Principal, Mr. Rob McGrath?
Yes, here.
LMS Principal, Mr. Tim Sandry. LMHS Assistant Principal, Mrs. Annika Scott. Primary School Interim Principal, Mr. Chad Adams?
Yes.
Social Worker, Ms. Jamie Mallett? Jamie's here. Hi, Jamie.
Hi.
Nursing Coordinator and Health and Safety Officer, Ms. Katie McGuire?
Yes.
Okay. I imagine that the others who were not with us at this point will join us shortly. So I will turn this back over to you, Chairperson Bertrand.
Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Public Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website, on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. But before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Wendy Bertrand, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Also, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. That will help ensure accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until I turn the floor over to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Four items with public comment. After members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Then I will call on each by name with three minutes for any comments. Tonight, we will have extended length of time for those public comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So first item on our agenda is an executive session. Executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel. Dr. Burnham, I actually need a motion for us to go to that executive session if any members of the committee can provide that. Ms. Shapiro?
I'm Sophie Shapiro and I move to enter executive session.
Is there a second? Carol, Ms. Archambault?
Carol Archambault, and I would second that.
All in favor? Dr. Burnham, is that a roll call vote?
Mrs. Archambault?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. So we will be moving to executive session briefly. We should not be long. We will be, we will be back into this, this meeting room as soon as possible. We're hoping about 15 minutes. The school committee members, we will leave and go into our
Just refresh, refresh, it just popped up.
Um, you know what I mean?
That's what I would I agree, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's great. This is a great, oh, hello, I can actually see you entertaining family friends here.
Oh, I'm in the Zoom meeting.
Oh, you are, yeah. Yeah, so mine, I'm still not working. I'm sorry. How many people are in the Zoom?
School Committee, we are all back, yes?
Yes.
All right, then we will, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Good evening, everybody. And, and that's a chair's report. We've had our executive session. And I, I don't, I have one item for our chair's report tonight. And that was to congratulate the class of 2020 who graduated on Saturday on the front field. It was a great ceremony. I'm thrilled that the class was able to finish their time at Lunenburg High School together in person. So again, congrats to class of 2020 and thank you to everyone tonight for being here. Next item on our agenda, we're going to move to public comment. So I just want to give everybody an idea of how public comment will work tonight as we are in large group. If you looked at the agenda, you will see that it is, we extended the period for public comment. So tonight, we're going to work starting with a 30-minute time period and reevaluate if we need to. So just some, some items to consider around public comment. The first is it needs, this particular public comment at the top of our meeting needs to relate to agenda items. So items that are on our agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand either, you know, on, in the chat or if you can't, just put your hand up. We'll, we'll look through, we'll look to get to, to everyone that we can. A reminder, tonight's not a public hearing. So we will not, you know, spend our whole meeting with public comment. Comment, if you do have a question, what we're going to ask you to do is you can state your question, but put it in the chat as well. And what Superintendent Burnham is going to do is she's, when she has her presentation around recommendation for the school year, if the question has to do with that, then she will incorporate all the questions and answers into that presentation so that we're not stopping for individual questions, particularly since many may overlap each other. And, and when you do, when you're called on to for public comment, please state your name and your address. And we are going to ask that each person, as they're making public comment, keeps to about three minutes. I'm going to try and keep an eye on here on, on my, on my clock, but just for that as well, comment, question is okay. So, and again, if, if we still have a lot of public comment out there at 30 minutes, we will reevaluate and extend a bit if we need to. So on that note, we're going to turn it over and look for, look for public comment, raised hands, and and go from there. Looking, looking through if anyone, Dr. Burnham, if you see any, I'm looking.
I see, I can see Chris Sullivan, looks like his hand is up. The only one I see.
Okay, then, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, Chris Sullivan, can you, can you hear me? Did I unmute?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. One way Highland Street here in Lunenburg. Comment really just dealing with the hybrid model, which in, in essence, I support at this stage, certainly more so than full remote learning. But my, my concern as a, as a parent is the, kind of the back and forth that, that is going to happen with the hybrid model that's being proposed, i.e. remote Monday and then in Tuesday, out Wednesday, in Thursday, out Friday. My concern is, is dealing with somewhat the continuity of learning with students. Also dealing with the necessary cleaning and so forth that's going to have to occur on a, on a nightly basis between students coming in and out of the, out of the school. I think it's, it's mainly the more confusion with bus schedules. My, my thought when I heard hybrid model was, was that we're going to look maybe more as a two days on, a hybrid, you know, a remote day in the middle and the other half, the other cohort would be two days on and the, at the end of the week kind of deal. Yeah, if you have students that are in Monday and Tuesday and then there's a deep clean of the school on Wednesday with everybody doing remote learning ahead of another cohort of students coming in on Thursday and Friday for the week, I, I feel like there's some additional safety that goes on with that. I, I, again, the continuity of learning with students. I, I, again, the continuity of learning with students, being able to be in front of a teacher on, on Monday and then come back in the next day and see the teacher again on Tuesday to address questions and can, and continue with a lesson plan before they go into a remote mode. And I understand that remote, you know, it does lead to a little bit more of a lengthy remote period for, for students of five days. Or that the five days that they're not in school, but I, yeah, I think with, with less, you know, potentially lessening any sort of virus transmission between kids going back and forth that frequently. Again, bus, you know, bus confusion, the, the bus drivers are going to know that first two days of the week, they're dealing with one cohort of students, and then the end of the week, they're dealing with another cohort. That was my, my true sense in, in what I look at, when I look at the hybrid model is something that I'd like the school committee to consider when they, you know, when they're, when they're looking at that for the safety of the students and continuity of learning with the students. Recognizing, I, I understand too, and some of the concern is that Monday is a holiday, you know, there's a lot of holidays on Mondays. And maybe that adjustment, we move, it's a four-day work week, and then it's a Tuesday, Wednesday model for the kids, and the deep clean happens on Wednesday night before another cohort comes in on Thursday and Friday, but I'd like the board to, you know, a committee to maybe consider that, that model of a hybrid scenario there, just my two cents. So thanks, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. LeBlanc?
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Lisa LeBlanc, and I'm the president of the Lunenburg Education Association. My job in this role is to speak on behalf of my members, a professional group of experienced and dedicated educators. I'm going to start by speaking about the process that got us here tonight. Since March 13th, the school district and the educators have worked tirelessly to continue to deliver the excellent education our students deserve, with no time to absorb the blow of moving to remote learning and to plan accordingly. We scrambled, it wasn't ideal, but remote learning can and will look better. When school ended on June 13th, our next phase began. The entire district's administration, administrative team, along with the union dove headfirst into our biggest challenge to date, returning students to school during a pandemic. Every hurdle has been met with diverse ideas, opinions, solutions, and answers. While many questions still remain unanswered, we have worked in concert so far to arrive at this point, and our work will continue. Thank you, Dr. Burnham, Mr. Cassidy, and the entire administrative team for putting the focus on safely returning our staff and students to school by creating solutions side by side with your educators. At this moment in time, a majority of the LEA members support the superintendent's hybrid model. Every model presents its own challenges, and hybrid is no exception. We will devote this next month to making sure each building is as safe as the next, paying particular attention to our school buildings with air quality and ventilation concerns, and making sure every student and educator who can safely attend in person will go home safely as well. Many of our educators are parents. They truly understand what these models look like from a parent's perspective because they are there too. They worry about their kids losing ground educationally, missing out on social opportunities, feeling anxious about changes, or about how they can possibly do their job while supporting their own child's education. Whether an educator has a child at home or not, the truth is educators lose sleep over other people's children. It's really true. This summer, we wake up in the middle of the night, we worry about a science project that may look different next year, or concerns about a former student with anxiety or breathing issues. We wake up and think, how will we pass papers next year in class? Or during remote learning, why didn't that student check it with me? Are they okay? In the spring, on social media and on TV, teachers were lauded with praise. We deserve a million dollars for what we do, or how do we handle them all day? We're a godsend. But now we're lazy, we don't want to work, we don't care about our students. None of that is true. We love our students, we love our jobs. We get to help our community raise kids every day. It's important work that we take very seriously, regardless of the mode we're in. So are we there yet? Not yet. We have more work to do. We need to make things safer and more equitable for our students and our staff. We need to continue to ensure that safety moving forward. We're eager to resume learning in person as that's how education is supposed to be. Our greatest obligation, however, is to keep students, educators, families, and communities out of harm's way and to prevent a resurgence of COVID. We also need to be aware of the circumstances around us that we can't control. There are decisions the district's making, and there are decisions that the virus is making. That should be our guiding principle in the days and weeks to come, but we will get there together exactly the way we started. When I can ensure that Lunenburg's educators are safe, supported, and prepared, we can ensure that the students of Lunenburg are receiving a top-tier education which supports, protects, and prepares them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Matthew Brenner, I see a hand raised.
Oh, thank you very much. My name is Matthew Brenner. I live at 619 Northfield Road. And I, I want to start by just first expressing a great support for the, for the teachers and for the teachers' union and everything they've said. They're doing a fantastic job with a difficult hand being dealt, and I know many citizens of the town, myself included, sincerely appreciate the work that's being done. I'm speaking specifically looking ahead when we discuss the hybrid model over a very strong concern I have about what appears to be that there will be no policy requiring masks in pre-K, grades K are pre-K, K and 1. And it has been said by the superintendent that they'll, will be following DESI guidelines. But since DESI put out its guidelines, and it's been weeks since that's happened, there's been increasing evidence that, that younger children likely do spread COVID. And so to simply say that, well, they're less likely to spread, and it's DESI guidelines, doesn't seem appropriate. In addition, DESI's own guidelines don't follow the CDC recommendations for children with masks, and they don't follow Massachusetts' own recommendations for masks in public spaces. Really, actually, the, I say recommendations, the law, or the requirement saying that if they go to the store, the kindergartner has to wear a mask. For those families that have someone with a significant risk factors, additional risk factors that put them at additional risk of mortality with COVID, like myself, this puts us in a really tight bind. It's easy to say that, well, we have the choice of remote learning, and while that is a choice that the district is thankfully putting on the table for many families, the reality is, especially for families of children with special needs, remote learning is not going to be an acceptable alternative. Last year, with a child in pre-K and a child in first grade, it was virtually impossible to meet their needs from remote learn, you, with remote learning, given that both also had special needs that made it more difficult for them to learn at home. When we compound this with the additional grades, with the additional requirements of time and learning that DESI is putting forward, we're looking at a scenario where at-home learning isn't going to work for some kids. Now, if the virus is awful and we can't be in school, that's completely understandable. But for the hybrid model, if we're going to say kids can go to school, we need to be doing it in the safest way possible. I know there's a concern, the saying, oh, kids can't wear masks, they won't be good about it. My four-year-old, soon to be five, going into kindergarten, has autism, has compliance issues and sensory issues. He can wear a mask for three, or for three hours straight, over three hours, for therapy sessions. For children who really struggle with this, I know that we have the, I'm forgetting the name of the initials, but we have the special therapist at the primary school who should be able to help construct the BCBA, thank you, who could help put together plans to get kids acclimated to masks. It's really important, if we're going to talk about safety, we're not only looking at the safety of the children, but the safety of their families as well, because the safety of those kids will be long-term impacted if parents are dropping dead. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you. Mr. Rafer Zader Moisen?
Hello, this is Gary Rafer Zader Moisen, 3 Richards Way in Lunenburg. My, my simple comment, and I'll take those offline, is one thing I haven't seen a lot of information on is social distancing and masking policies. How will they be implemented? And more importantly, how will they be enforced? What are the policies involved with children who offend? Will parents be informed? You know, we, we try to be very serious about masking here and try to teach it with our kids. And I just want to make sure that that policy is shared. I haven't seen any much information about that at this point. But going forward, that's an important concept, important for us, you know, to understand now, how are those policies being done, implemented? Repeat offenders, you know, how, what is consequences for, for students who don't follow it, and that type of thing. So I'm looking forward to seeing those policies in, in the near future. And that's all I have to comment at this point.
Thank you. Dr. Adams?
Oh, just Katie's fine. Um, I, I was just wondering, I know in the past, like when there's been an accident or something, there's grief counseling and there's plans in place. Um, I just wonder at the beginning of school, and maybe it'll be discussed, is there going to be some sort of attention paid to the social emotional health? We've all been dabbling in this as adults, and I go to the grocery store with the masks, but choose to leave the kids home, um, things like that. When they show up to the setting, it's almost out of like a horror film, regardless of how you feel about COVID or anything. Everybody's walking into this really shattered world where everything's changed, people have a lot of different expectations. And so I just really hope that there's something being done or thought about to be sure to welcome the kids with some sort of, you know, I guess, just well-thought-out plan and, and dealing with their fears and questions, not just about the virus, but about why everybody has all this new behavior, because we can digest it differently than a child. And so I didn't know what's in place. And there may be something in writing somewhere, but so much input's coming in, I just wanted to verbalize that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, your, your address?
Oh, okay, sorry. 39 Peninsula Drive in Lunenburg.
Thanks. And just a reminder, within public comment, as we have, we have some questions embedded in that. And so Superintendent Burnham has, Dr. Burnham has, is taking notes on this, so that when she does her presentation later in the agenda regarding her recommendation that, for the school year, these are, she can get those questions all answered. So additional, additional questions? Mr. Sullivan? Public comment?
Yes, one way Highland Street again. Just a question, I, I'm not seeing the chat to type in, I'm not seeing the chat box to type the question in.
No, we're, we're working on that, I believe.
So.
Our, our moderator is working hard.
I would, I would have added, I would just ask my question there. The question I had was just when I was reviewing the data from this parent survey, it looked like roughly 500 students opting out of the full or hybrid model. I was, what I was, my question was related to the breakdown by school or what that looks like. Just more curiosity than anything else, if it's, if we're seeing a trend of, you know, the vast majority of those are primary school versus, versus middle school or high school kind of deal. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Additional public comments? I'm looking for, for raised hands. Ms. Brenner?
Hi, sorry, I need to start my video quickly. Here we go. So I'm at 619 Northfield Road. I was analyzing the data from the survey, and I was just curious. I noticed that the question about pre-K, K and 1, where we asked if the parents would be sending their kids in with a mask, that was asked to everybody, regardless of if you had a child in that grade. And if you look at it, apparently of the 1,400 responses, we got 700 of those were for children in pre-K, K or 1, based on the responses, which is not at all valid, given that only 25% attended the primary school. So I do, any masking decisions we make, I just would want us to make sure we look at that data and make sure we're actually looking at people who actually have kids in those grades, which I don't know if that's even possible without going through individually at this point.
Thank you. Additional public comments? I am not seeing any. So I will, I will give it a few more seconds, and then we will move on away from public comment. All right. Thank you, everyone, for the public comment. And again, I know Dr. Burnham will do her best to answer those questions within her presentation shortly. So our next item on our agenda is we're going to review and approve meeting minutes. So everyone received those school committee members in their and their pack. Were there any, did any members have questions or concerns, comments? Looking down line, I don't see anyone. I'll take a motion then to Mr. Leighton to.
Make a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes for June 30th.
Second, Dr. Burnham, we are, I actually need to stop. Dr. Burnham, we're missing Ms. Arshambo.
She's connecting now.
You're muted, Dr. Burnham.
She's logging back in now.
Okay, so do we want to wait just a moment? Okay, we'll wait just a moment. And once she's back on, we can, she's here, she's here. Thank you, thank you. So we need a second to approve those meeting minutes. Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly. I second the motion.
Roll call vote then.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to the superintendent's report.
No report this evening.
Old business, action item, ratification of the one-year LEA contract.
So I'd invite, I'd invite Mr. Cassidy to frame this item for us all.
Good evening. This is Mike Cassidy, Business Manager for the Lunenburg Public Schools. What is in front of the committee this evening is the ratification and acceptance of a one-year contract with the Lunenburg Educational Association. The administration has been meeting with their LEAs negotiating committee since November. Due to the closure, there was, and some of financial uncertainty, we agreed on a one-year extension of, or one-year agreement. And we'll continue our negotiations in the fall. Most of the, the MOA, which is in front of you tonight, is a lot of language changes, clarifications, really redefining some items, part of our operations, just, just kind of clarifying roles and descriptions. However, there are some additional costs that are associated with this contract, and I would like to outline those to you very briefly. There's a $17,032 cost with this MOA, and that's approving a half percent increase for 81 teachers who are at that, the maximum step in the salary schedule. This half percent increase will take effect halfway through the school year. And the value of that is $17,032. In addition, there's a 5,000, up to a $5,160 expense related to adjusting athletic coaches within the salary schedule. To cross-country coach and modify. To cross-country coach and modifying our middle school athletic program and align them with other middle school coaches. There's an additional agreed upon stipend for three teachers, which is a $250 travel allowance, which basically is a cost or an expense that we reimburse, currently reimburse those three teachers on an annual basis anyway. So really, there's no value or impact to that negotiation. Once again, there, there is, there's a lot of language changes and clarifications. Some, there's an evaluation team that is going to be developed in the district. But I just want to emphasize to the committee, this is a one-year deal. And we will begin negotiating with Arganiya Groups sometime in the fall. So we'll start that process again. I'm trying, just very quickly going over the memo that I had sent you. Really, the, the, the big things that you should be contemplating are the additional and relative costs, which I've just outlined to you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now. Otherwise, I, I'd move it back to the chair person for consideration.
Checking in, do any members have any questions? One question I had, Mr. Cassidy, if you can just clarify regarding coaches. If for some reason, those sport seasons don't happen, there is not payment, correct?
That's currently right. Yes, that is correct. The, if the season starts at some point, we'll, we'll calculate some sort of payment. But right now, it's unknown. There are no scheduled payments for those coaches at this time.
Just wanted to clarify that. All right, one last look. If there are no other questions from committee members, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Leighton?
I'd make a motion to approve and ratify the one-year contract with the LEA.
Is there a second? Ms. Shapiro?
I'm Sophie Shapiro, and I second that motion.
Roll call vote.
I would just make mention that the town manager is also joining us. And as per our agreement, she will have a vote this evening on this contract. You know that she is on the line. I don't know.
She is on the line.
Okay. Wondering if she has access to her sound?
She does have to be unmuted.
Okay.
Hello, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so roll call vote. Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lemieux?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Moving on in our agenda, revision of the 2020-2021 school calendar. Dr. Burnham will give us updated.
So at our last meeting, I brought this forward anticipating that I would be making a recommendation to change our school calendar to front load our typical three full days and two early release PD days at the start of the year to allow for teachers to come together before students return to school for training, professional development, and preparation and planning to receive students. I had indicated to you that just prior to our meeting last week, the Department of Ed, the Commissioner reached an agreement with the teacher unions, including the AFT, MTA, and the Boston Teachers Union, and agreed to reduce the required 180-day school year to 170 days, thereby allowing school districts access to their teachers for those 10 days. I've had conversations with the leadership of the LEA. And at this point, we're going to recommend that we use those 10 days at the very beginning of the year. It was clear from the Commissioner that schools were to begin no later than September 16. If we felt that we could not open by September 16, we needed to submit a waiver. We believe that we can include all 10 days and still start school with students on Wednesday, September 16. So what we're recommending for those 10 days, teachers would report as they would have prior on Monday, August 31. They would also attend Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday that week, which would bring us to September 3. Every year, the Friday heading into Labor Day weekend, there is no school in session for staff or students. So we would leave that Friday still, no, no one in session. The following week, Labor Day would be the Monday. We would have the teachers in on the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that week. So that now brings us up to 10 days. The following week, Monday, Tuesday, September 14 and 15 would be those additional two days that would round us up to those 10 days. During those 10 days, we will be working with staff to provide safety protocol training, training and professional development for social emotional learning, which is going to be very important. That was one of the, the issues that was raised during public comment. We definitely have an entire plan relative to supporting students and staff in that way. I would like to also mention that I would want to defer the start date for pre-K and kindergarten until September 29. That will allow our pre-K and kindergarten staff to conduct screenings. Typically, registration opens in the winter months. You know, students are enrolled for, for pre-K and K. And we typically conduct several days of screening testing for these incoming students. That's typically done the first week in May. As you know, we were closed in May, and therefore there were no screenings conducted. To delay the start for pre-K and K would allow our staff to have time to set appointments, to have students come in, go through the screening process, so that we can, you know, space appropriately and, and schedule appointments in a way that keeps everybody socially distant as well. I am recommending at this point that the early release PD day that was originally scheduled for Tuesday, September 29, in our current approved calendar, that that early release day be removed from the calendar for now. I'm requesting that we just defer setting the dates for Lunenburg's typical three full professional development days and two early release professional development days until I can have further discussion with the teachers around where we think that those dates would most optimally be placed. We may want to use them to balance out cohort attendance. As an example, the week before Thanksgiving, there's always a half day on Wednesday. It might make sense that we place a half day PD day on the Tuesday, so that the Tuesday cohort has a half day that week and the Wednesday cohort has a half day that week. It might make sense that we plan two full days in that week heading into the, the December break. That way, teachers have dedicated time to assess where they've been for, essentially close to the first half of the year, and prepare for the second half of the year. It may be very beneficial for us to continue to hold one full PD day on the election day in November. But again, I think, I think I'd really like to have some time with the teachers and the administrators now that we know that we've got 10 days from the state to utilize upfront for all the critical training, professional development, and preparation necessary to return students to school. I'd really like to have some time to be strategic about how we optimally utilize the three full days and the two early release days that we have in any typical year. I would want to come back to the committee by the end of September with a recommendation as to when those dates will be. Questions?
Committee members, any specific questions?
Concerns?
Yes, concerns, questions? None. And I mean, you've been very thorough in the explanation, Dr. Burnham. And, you know, we look forward to hearing, you know, at the end of September, thoughts, once there's been more time for planning.
Mr. Leighton had a question?
Yeah, just another question, just as much as a comment. I totally agree. I think gaining those 10 extra days is really going to change the dynamics of the beginning of the year. So you can get a lot of PD in. It makes sense to wait a little bit and try to find a good spot.
You know, I realize that it's difficult for families, you know, to have a lot of tentative and uncertain. But I do think that it's really important for us to optimally utilize this time in a way that benefits the staff and the students for the year ahead.
If there are no further questions, I will take a motion regarding revision of the 2020-2021 school calendar. Okay, Ms. Arshambo?
Carol Arshambo. I wish to move that we adopt the changes to the 2020-2021 school calendar as outlined by Dr. Burnham.
Second, Mr. Leighton?
I second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to new business, personnel update.
And I'd invite Mr. Cassidy to address this for you.
Good evening. Again, everyone, this is Mike Cassidy, business manager. I'm reporting out on personnel updates. So I have shared to the school committee through the superintendent our recent hires, resignations, and retirements. So a couple of highlights as far as resignations. We, our primary school principal, Christina Gertin, is resigning and was in the meantime, Chad Adams was appointed interim principal for the school year. Rebecca Hyde is our new Title I coordinator, the district. Her position is completely funded under the grant. There's been some staff turnover. There's been some internal transfers within, within the department from school to school. I'm happy to report that we're getting a great quality applicant pool for our, our open positions. And we're ahead of schedule as far as hiring goes. I just want to let you know that currently we have one teaching position that's still open. That is the, the primary school special ed position. And we've got two paraprofessional positions that are currently posted. But that, those positions will not be hired until we know what the start of the school year looks like. So so once we know whether, whether or not those positions are going to be needed, we will make the appointment. Otherwise, we'll hold off and evaluate it when the time comes. So with that being said, this is a report that needs to be accepted by the school committee as an official record for the meeting.
Okay. I will take a motion to accept the personnel report as outlined by Mr. Cassidy. And Ms. Arshambo?
Carol Arshambo. I would like to make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented this evening by Mr. Cassidy.
And a second? Mr. Leighton?
Brian Leighton, I second.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you. Moving on in our agenda, recommendation for the school year 2020-2021. Dr. Burnham?
Thank you. I believe Liz Peterson is on the call.
Yes, I am.
Liz, can you share the, the slides?
I will. It just says the host disabled my screen sharing.
Mr. Malandrinos, hopefully you can re-enable the screen sharing.
It's saying it is still disabled?
I don't see an option to allow it. Hold on just a second. I made you host, Liz. Can you present now?
Okay, let's see. I believe I can now. Can you see that?
Very good, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll put it on presentation mode. It should be all set. Oh, boy. Let's try that one again. Done. Okay, can you see it now?
Yes.
All right. Great.
Thanks, Liz.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would like to begin by thanking the 35-member reopen planning team. And I would like to thank all of those additional folks who joined the work of individual task groups. This is an extraordinarily complicated situation with many, many challenges to find solutions for. And I believe that we've put forward our best effort and have before you this evening. Liz, you can go to the next slide. What meets our objective? And our objective was to design models for high-quality teaching and learning in a safe and healthy environment for staff and students in partnership with families. So the planning process and timeline. The reopen planning team was convened and met June 1st and June 30th. As you recall, we got our initial guidance from DESI in late June. Task groups began meeting and working on their specific tasks between June 30th and July 24th. On July 24th, the reopen planning team met and prepared an update to send to staff and families. That was sent on July 24th. Additionally, we prepared and sent a survey to families and staff as well on July 24th, although the survey for staff was more focused on childcare need. We held two forums, actually three forums. Mrs. Hanscom held a forum specific for our special education staff on July 28th. We held a full staff forum on the 28th, and we also held a family forum on the evening of the 28th. On the 29th, I was before you and recommended that we would likely be needing to make some changes to our school calendar to front-load professional development days for staff so that they could be ready to receive students when school opened. Our family survey closed July 30th. And we are here this evening presenting the models that the reopen planning team developed. And as a reminder, approved plans must be submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by August 10th. So there are a few things that are universal across all learning models. There were some questions around cohort, and there are multiple ways that this word is used. So we have school-level cohorts. As an example, at the primary school level, self-contained classrooms and their assigned teacher, they are a cohort. At the Turkey Hill Elementary, grades four and five have interdisciplinary teams. The students assigned to those teachers and the teachers and all of the students assigned to them become a cohort. At the middle school, we have interdisciplinary teams for six and seven. Those groups would become a cohort. The high school is the only school that does not have cohorts. The the schedule is complex. No two students have exactly the same schedule with exactly the same teachers for every course. We're not looking to change that model to create cohorts. We're looking to implement the high school schedule as we always have with safety precautions in place. Another way that we use the term cohort is in the hybrid model. There will be a set of students, grades pre-K through 12, that will be assigned to be the A cohort. They would attend school on campus on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the other cohort, Cohort B, would be assigned to attend campus on Wednesdays and Fridays. Assigning cohorts at the district level is very, very complex. We need to make sure that the cohorts are balanced in a variety of ways. We will likely have our first iteration of a sort into an A and B cohort by splitting alphabetically, potentially. But we also need to examine their cohort for balance of students with high needs, students receiving special ed services, students who will require bus transportation. I can't have a cohort that has 300 children that need bus transportation and another cohort that has 100 that need bus transportation. It needs to be balanced. And again, this is extraordinarily complex, multiple layers. I know that I've had some parents already sending, you know, requests, could my son or daughter be placed with their best friend? We will, we will take that information. We will do our best, but I cannot make any guarantees at this time. Regardless of model, we have undertaken a curriculum review. We examined the curriculum that was covered during the spring closure, and we assessed areas where perhaps there might have been standards or specific units that were not covered. We want this information to be available to all of our faculty so that upon return during those 10 days when they can start to prepare to receive students, if any adjustments need to be made to their curriculum for this coming year to pick up or offer enhanced instruction around any standards that were not robustly covered or not covered in it at all, we want to make sure that we can recoup that into this upcoming year's curriculum. Regardless of the model, whether we're full-return hybrid or full-remote, the intention is that the entire year's curriculum will be delivered. We also are looking to, with the assistance of our Behavioral Health Advisory Council, to incorporate social-emotional components in the curriculum where appropriate. We know that we are going to need to assess need to determine if there are any academic learning gaps for any of our students. And we have done an assessment of the types of assessment tools that are available to us and the ones that we will utilize to determine if there are students that have gaps. To what degree, what is the intervention that would be required for them to close that gap? This year, again, regardless of the meeting model, whether we're meeting full day, every day on campus, or hybrid or remote, any meetings or conferences, we would look to continue to conduct virtually. It is a parent's right to request a face-to-face meeting, and we would accommodate if that is the case. But our intention is, by and large, to continue holding our meetings in a virtual form. We're looking to have our parent-teacher conferences conducted virtually or by phone and to hold all of our open houses, again, virtually. As far as our business operations, all schools and administration offices are going to continue to conduct business electronically. In cases where business cannot be conducted electronically, appointments will have to be scheduled ahead of time to ensure that everybody has the proper safety precautions in place. Regardless of the model, we are looking to have a feedback loop this year throughout the year. We're looking at every three to four weeks establishing routines whereby families can drop into virtual meetings, either at a district level or at the school level. We would potentially be conducting surveys periodically. We would also encourage feedback to a dedicated email address, similar to the email address that was established to solicit feedback from the parents for the reopen. We had the Fall 2020 reopen dedicated email. So that will happen next year regardless of the learning model. There were many questions about what are options for families. Families are not going to have the option to choose to send their child to a full-return or to choose a hybrid or to choose a remote. The only one choice should the district open, whether that's a full-open or a hybrid-open, parents who are not comfortable returning their children to campus will absolutely have the option to keep their children in a remote learning model. Roughly 30%, and again, we did not have 100% completion of the the parent survey. And currently, our administrators and secretaries are contacting families that did not complete the survey to gather the data that we need. But basically, the initial look at this is, you know, probably about 30% right now are saying that they would opt to keep their children in a remote model. We need to take a deeper look at that and get a breakdown by grade level. As an example, if I have two fifth graders who are opting to stay remote, I may not dedicate a teacher to teaching a full-remote class for two students. But we do have excellent opportunities for online learning platforms where the curriculum for different courses has been established and aligned with the Massachusetts State frameworks. So if we had very few students at a particular grade level or a particular course, rather than dedicate an entire staff member to such a small number of students, we may, we may set those students up with an online school-type resource. Additionally, students with high needs or students that fall into certain subgroups, our special ed students, potentially our 504 students, our English language learners, our homeless, our low socioeconomic students, those students in in regards to the guidelines from the Department of Ed, those students, we are encouraged to provide additional access to face-to-face instruction. So there is the possibility for parents to choose to send their students that fall into those categories to the campus four or five days a week. So we took a look at a full return to campus. Under a full return to campus, we're talking about all staff and all students returning to school. In this scenario, classrooms would have desks spaced three feet between desks, so there would be a three-foot of distance between students. However, the safety guidelines for adults still remains at six feet. So there would still have to be a buffer area for the teacher to work in that would keep the teacher six feet from the students. When, essentially, in this full return, we are returning classes essentially to normal. They would look, the layout of them would look like a typical back-to-school return. The difference is that students would have to be wearing masks, as would our staff members. But when you have the the space of the classroom occupied with 24 or 25 desks, you're not providing enough additional space for additional adults to be in the room supporting students. Adults like our special ed teachers, service providers, and paraprofessionals. Those, any additional adults, need to maintain that six feet of distance. Under this particular model, again, where students are three feet apart, it becomes even more important that students are not removing their masks. In order to be able to remove the masks, they need to have six feet of distance. So in this configuration of a classroom with students three feet apart from each other, it is vitally important that all of them keep their mask on. This means that we will have to schedule the building so that every teacher has a time that they can take their classroom out on a scheduled mass break. At that time, they will also be taking their water break. Because again, if they're in the classroom three feet apart, they can't take their mask down to take water either. And we know that we cannot, you know, go back to business as usual where students are free to go to the boys' or girls' room from class unsupervised. We will have to take whole-class scheduled trips to the facilities so that there can be appropriate supervision and ensure that the safeguards maintain in place. Lunches, again, initially, we were hearing from the Department of Ed that the recommendation was going to be lunches in classrooms. If classrooms are three feet apart, we cannot have lunch in classrooms. Students need to take their mask off to have lunch. They need to be six feet apart. So lunches would be in the cafeteria. They would be seated at tables six feet apart. However, in order to get this spacing, this is going to require additional lunches, lunch periods being added to the day. And we would likely begin lunch periods at 9:30 a.m. and they would go through 1:40 in the afternoon. Additionally, we're going to need additional spacing. We are not going to be able to accommodate all of the students, even with additional lunches. So we had to take a look at the possibility of tents or other covered structures being purchased or rented and placed outdoors for additional covered seating. With transportation, the guidelines, regardless of a full-return or a hybrid-return, we are limited to one student per seat. Our buses, by that guideline, depending on the size of the bus, some of them are slightly bigger than than the others, but we're looking at somewhere between 25 and 27 students per bus. Lunenburg only has 10 buses. There is no chance that we are going to get additional buses. They are not available. We're going to have to work with the 10 that we have. So with 25 students and 10 buses, one bus run, we can transport 250 students. Currently, we have two bus runs. One that picks up six through 12, drops them at school, and then they go back out on the route to pick up K-5, drop them at Turkey Hill, and then drop them at the primary school. If we had a full return to campus, in order to transport those students that we legally must transport, Lunenburg currently transports more students than we are legally required to transport. Even if we looked at just what we were legally required to do, that's transporting K through six, anyone who lives two miles from school or more. In order to get bus runs with just 250 students on those 10 buses, we're not talking about just changing the start time for the Turkey Hill Elementary. Potentially, we're talking about having a bus run and a start and dismissal time for grades K and 1, 2 and 3, 4 and 5. With every bus run, there's additional cost for the bus company. With a full return to campus based on the guidance from the Department of Ed that says that masks for our pre-K K and 1 are recommended but not required. but not required. If we were to follow that model, then our kindergarten and first grade classrooms could not be spaced with desks three feet apart. We would have to space those classrooms with desks six feet apart. We were planning for five first grade classrooms next year. If we were to do a full return, I would now need ten first grade classrooms. That means I need ten first grade teachers. I currently have five. We could take the kindergarten and put them back to half day sessions. Currently, we have six kindergartens. If we move to half, we could have three kindergarten classrooms and three kindergarten teachers. And I could reassign three kindergarten teachers to teach first grade. However, I need the classroom space as well. And I still would have to hire two additional first grade teachers, even in that model. I'm going to need to move the pre K classrooms out of the primary school to free up classroom space for those additional first grade classrooms. And the pre K would have to move up to TCP. There would be added cost for rental of additional classroom space at TCP. There were lots of challenges when we look at the full return. We believe that we are going to largely create a climate in the classroom and in the building that is heavily focused on adherence to safety protocols. We're going to have time lost to monitoring space and scheduled breaks. There's going to be a very restrictive spacing for safety. And in the three foot of spacing, that is not consistent with the CDC guidelines. And I'm sure you can imagine that's a bit of concern to our staff and I'm sure to many of our families as well. We know that there would be increased costs for transportation, increased costs for additional space, whether that's covered outdoor space for additional lunch seating or additional pre K classroom space at TCP. We're going to have to change our model for kindergarten and drop back to a half day, which honestly, educationally, is is not the recommendation that I would want to make. We will require hiring additional teaching staff. With the conditions of three feet separating students and twenty four students in a classroom, the level of concern amongst the staff for their own health and safety, the concerns are are heightened. And it is likely, as a result of that, that people who do have valid eligible medical conditions would be looking for a leave of absence. It may be very difficult for us to secure substitute coverage. And licensure, while the Department of Ed has relaxed some of the requirements around licensure, I certainly do not want to move a second grade teacher to the high school to teach Algebra I. And I don't want my physics teacher being reassigned down to the kindergarten class to teach kindergarten. It's a complete mismatch. It's not educationally sound. So those are some challenges that that we may have to deal with as well. In the hybrid return to campus, all the staff would be expected to return, although we know that that won't happen because we do know that we do have staff with conditions that will make them eligible to request a leave of absence. But the expectation is that all of our staff would return. And approximately fifty percent of our students would return to campus. And we would be in a five day week, two days on campus, three days remote. The classroom will be spaced with six feet of distance between students and six feet of distance between adults and students in the room. In this particular model with fewer desks in the classroom, there is more space so that additional adults can safely come into the classroom and move about that space and keep distanced. Lunches would still be in the cafeteria. We would still need to schedule mask breaks and bathroom breaks and water breaks. But again, it won't be as disruptive because we would only be scheduling half as many. We, in this model for lunch, would not require, you know, lunch to start at nine thirty in the morning and go until one thirty in the afternoon. And we don't believe that we would need to secure additional outdoor seating for lunches either. We still have the same limitations with transportation. However, we are transporting half the students. Based on the parent's survey, and again, the survey was not one hundred percent complete. We're still contacting families to get additional data. The initial data looks as if we we may be able to accommodate those students who would be seeking transportation in a hybrid open. It's possible that we may have to consider no transportation for high school age students in order to have the right numbers. But it would not be as significant a hurdle as reopening with a full return to campus. With six feet of distancing in all the classrooms, we don't have any additional worries around grade one or moving kindergarten to half day or moving the pre K to TCP. In the hybrid model for the remote portions of the day, we would still use the Google platforms. We would use Google Classroom. And this year, we would be adding as a mandatory feature for all classes, the Google Meet, which is similar to Zoom. It affords teachers and students the opportunity for synchronous learning. We would definitely have components of synchronous and asynchronous learning. There will be a set daily schedule. Attendance is required. This is all from the Department of Ed. Instructional hours are required. We typically have to meet nine hundred ninety hours at the upper grade levels annually. With the reduction from a hundred and eighty days to one hundred and seventy days, the hours have been decreased, I think, to eight hundred and thirty five hours. But the bottom line is that reduction is commensurate with the reduction of the ten days. So essentially, we still have to provide a full day of learning. And we are going to have to be able to document for the Department of Ed that we provided a full day of learning for students. Grades are going to be required. That's, we're going to go back to that traditional grading format. We will still be using Power School. Students on IEPs will attend on campus enough days to fulfill the service delivery grid supports. And certain groups like our homeless, our foster care, our English language learners, et cetera, they they may attend additional days as needed to receive the supports. Challenges here, we do still have some time lost to monitoring space and scheduled breaks. It is going to be a challenge. Our teachers are going to have to prep lessons for both their face to face classes and their remote classes. Again, we don't know what to anticipate under these conditions. Substitutes may be difficult to procure. And again, we may have some challenges with our high school staff and certifications for teaching specific kinds of courses. But we're thinking that we're going to run our typical schedule. And depending on staff who may request a leave of absence, we would do our best to fill a leave with somebody who holds the appropriate license. With a full remote return, one hundred percent of our general education students and staff will be teaching remotely. Students on IEPs and special education staff will be attending on campus enough days to fulfill the service delivery grid for each student's IEP. Our sub separate special education classes will likely attend four to five days a week, again, for service delivery. Again, certain subgroups may attend up to four to five days on campus, even in a remote learning structure. Again, Google Classroom and Google Meet will be the mandatory learning platform. We will have synchronous and asynchronous learning. Again, we must meet our instructional hours. And we will definitely be providing all students with grading consistent with the models that have been implemented in in prior years. In order to meet required hours for instruction and for the school year, teachers are going to have to adhere to a fixed instructional schedule. Each school will set forth, and it might be different at each grade level, but a schedule for instruction will be set at all grade levels. We would be looking for staff to be providing frequent feedback on assignments. And that can happen through small group meetings or one to one conferences or in a written form. Recorded teacher videos, they may be posted as part of a direct instruction or a flipped classroom. The key for us is legally, we cannot record lessons where students are captured and participatory in that lesson. Meetings are are going to be scheduled as typical, IEP meetings, 504 meetings, disciplinary meetings. And teachers, as in the past, would be expected to attend such meetings. We would be looking to provide common planning time for teachers to get together and plan as grade level or content area teams. The goal here is we want to ensure that the learning experience for a first grader is the same regardless of the teacher. We definitely have additional apps or or software that we can use and did use when we were on remote learning. However, any additional apps or or subscriptions would have to be district approved. Things like iExcel for the math, Lexia for our reading. And all of the use of those apps would be linked through the Google Classroom. Administrators are going to be invited as members, teaching members of every Google Classroom. In that way, they can visit classrooms. They can see how students are learning. And they can offer some feedback and potential supports for any teachers who may be struggling. The goal would be to provide the best, most robust learning experience possible. Teachers must be diligent about reporting students who are disruptive in a remote learning model. That will have to be addressed by the administration. Again, it's disciplinary in nature. It's it's not unlike if a child were disruptive in a physical classroom space. Teachers may have access to their classroom in order to teach remotely. But this is all pending whatever the public health conditions are. So as an example, we may have to go into a remote learning model because I have a high level of staff absenteeism with cold and flu season around the corner. If I were to have to move us into remote for that reason, there are teachers who could potentially choose to come into the physical campus and teach from their classroom space. If we are closed and put to remote based on state metrics and a governor making the decision, at that point, no staff would be coming to the campus. So it really will be condition dependent. Students will be required to join and remain a part of all Google classrooms associated with their classes on their schedules. Students did because they do have the capacity to drop themselves from a class on Google. But it will be clear that it is mandatory that they must remain on the roster for all of their Google classrooms. Disciplinary action will be taken if students remove themselves from an assigned classroom. Student attendance will be required for all classes on an individual student's schedule. Students would be expected to adhere to handbook guidelines, including any COVID related addendums. Example, appropriate dress code. We would expect that masks would also be appropriate. If they were inappropriate, it would be addressed as part of the dress code. Student cameras would be expected to be turned on during the Google Meet session so that the teacher can see that the child is actually attending the classroom. Students will be responsible for completing all assignments and participating in class activities and discussions. Students or parents would follow the procedures set forth in the Equity Access and Engagement Protocols if they're experiencing difficulty with remote access. We're going to have a team of folks dedicated to following up with families to ensure that they have what they need to be able to learn remotely. We will be distributing devices for every single student. And in homes where reliable internet access is a challenge, we will be providing hotspots. A one to one Google Meet session is permitted only if the virtual remote one to one learning services permission form has been signed by the student, parents or guardians. So in other words, there will be no one to one in a virtual setting without parent written permission. I would address here, there was a question relative to masks and if a student refused to wear one. As you can imagine, this is a very complex situation. I can tell you that there has been conversation with our school legal counsel. And there have been many, many conversations and listserv conversations amongst school attorneys relative to the consequences for willful refusal to wear a mask or willful refusal to follow safety protocol. We believe at this time, again, I'm not ready to make a statement that there's a policy here. But we believe at this time that as long as there was some level of egregiousness to the act, that we would be able to require the student to move to full remote learning and not be on campus. Because essentially, they are a safety threat to their peer group and to the staff when they refuse to follow the safety protocols put in place. Challenges with the full remote return. We haven't had eyes on our students since March. We really want to have eyes on our students. If we have to open with a full remote, seeing them even in a Google Meet is not the same as having an opportunity to sit with them in person and have a conversation and assess their well being. We know that some students are not going to have the appropriate support structure in a home setting for full remote learning. And we know that regardless, even when we're in a full remote model, there are some staff and students that will still need to attend on campus. And we're going to have to find ways to ensure their safety, particularly under conditions if if the metrics are ticking upward at the state level. I can't tell you exactly just yet how I'm going to be able to verify for you that students have attended a full day. We're still going to have to look at possible software or or other mechanisms that can be put in place so that we can reasonably assure that students have attended. so that we can reasonably assure that students have attended for a full day. We know that students were not attending for a full day. They maybe did their assignments, they maybe submitted them, but we know that they were not necessarily checked in and online for three hours when we were under remote learning last spring. Special services. So under a full return to campus or even a hybrid model, all students with IEPs will receive their full services in the on-campus or hybrid learning model. All services will be coordinated by their special education liaison, their special education teacher. If any learning, including related services, buries from the IEP grid due to PPE protocols, the school will have to notify the parents and make available additional services or a different model of service. Hybrid instruction and scheduling will occur only after full IEP services are completed on campus. So as an example, we may have a student who receives speech services two times a week, 30 minutes each time. It's possible that that student in a hybrid model can receive the speech services on the two days that they're on campus and therefore could work remotely for three days for the rest of that week. If we have students who need three days of services, they may need to come to campus three out of the five days and then can opt to work remotely for the other two. In a remote model, all students with IEPs will receive their IEP services to the fullest extent possible. All services will be coordinated by the special education liaison. And again, if there's any variance from the IEP grid, parents will be advised. Students who are already identified as high needs through the IEP process and who meet certain criteria would be eligible to be on campus for the full week. So the criteria are listed. Students must meet two out of the three to be eligible under high needs. Their services are provided outside of the general education classroom. Service providers are special education teachers and related service providers. So speech, OTPT and special education services constitute more than 75% of their school day. Behavioral health supports was something that was mentioned during the public comment. Again, the district, two years ago, created a behavioral health advisory council. The team has done phenomenal work over the last two years and there was a behavioral health task group as part of this reopen planning. We've been looking at things like student supports. We know that tier one support, that's full classroom. That's going to be a critical, critical need for the year ahead. That's why staff will end up with some social, emotional, professional development. We're going to utilize our morning meetings, our homerooms, advisory and developmental design time for addressing some of this tier one support need. In tier two, we have folks that will be working with our social worker, our guidance counselors. We have therapeutic animals. We have, of course, Officer McNamara, our SRO and his his trusty companion Hank, but this year we're adding Dory. There's a member of the community, somebody who lives here in Lunenburg, who is a retired school counselor and has her own dog who has been trained as a therapy dog and she has volunteered her time to spend time with our staff and our students with the dog. She also has a colleague and they have been providing professional development for administrators and educators across the state and she has offered to provide three days, 90-minute sessions each of those three days, social, emotional training for our staff. So the first week that we return, we've already got professional development lined up. We know that there are going to be students who have an even more significant need and at that level, we're talking tier three. We would be, you know, conducting case management, individual check-ins and that would be with guidance, social worker and our school psychologists. We recognize that the amount of support that will be needed by students and quite frankly, staff is overwhelming. We are not going to be able to provide our staff with support with our existing staff. So we would be looking to ensure that our staff have what they need through employee assistance programs, our interface referral service, and they too will have some time with Hank and Dory. We definitely know that families struggled through the closure. It's extraordinarily stressful. We truly appreciate all that families did to hang in there with us and support the kids the best they could. But we do fully recognize that it's an extraordinary amount of stress for families. So we are going to make sure that we have a system for check-ins with families to make sure that they have what they need. And again, we have the interface referral for them to access as well. We also know that we're going to have to be prepared for crisis-type supports and our behavioral health task group is working on developing procedures and protocols and we will have a crisis team in each of our schools. I can tell you that through the, knowing that this is a significant area of need in the year ahead, through the grant for the COVID funds that are coming in the form of a grant through the Department of Ed, we will be creating a behavioral health coordinator stipended position. So one of our staff members would be eligible for this stipended position and thereby take the lead and the responsibility for oversight of programming in this realm. So as I said, we're working on procedures and protocols for unsafe students, for mental health crisis situations, wellness checks. Again, we will have building-based behavioral support teams and they will have weekly meetings to talk about students of concern. We will be determining which assessment tools. You might recall last year, we did some universal screening for depression and anxiety. We're looking at other tools that we can use and we will be putting together a calendar for implementation of these assessments. We know that students who have difficulty behaviorally and act in ways that are unsafe for themselves and others, we often have to safely transport them to a safer location while they regain composure. We know that the training, we have staff that have been trained in the proper transport holds and restraint holds. Clearly, under the COVID conditions, there have been some technique changes and some added protective equipment requirements, but we have a great team. Our BCBA, Mary Young, has been working on all of this and she will be modifying the trainings that we have to provide for staff so that everybody's ready to go and we have already placed orders for the necessary PPE. We know that we need to be providing training for all of our staff. How do our staff support kids in a general classroom setting, right? Tier one, that's everybody. How are we supporting kids school-wide? What are we doing for our staff in training them to be self-aware, right? To have that self-wellness and self-care frame of mind? Because if they can't take care of themselves, they are not going to be able to support the students that need them most. We again, will review all the new protocols and procedures with staff and we really want to focus, again, the training that's coming that first week that we return to school. We want to focus teachers' thinking around how do we create and rebuild a safe and supportive environment for kids to return to class. We're going to create a wellness hub in every single school and the wellness areas may very well be used for individual break times. But these designated safe areas are going to be established in each of our buildings. Food service. So I want to just take a moment here to thank our Director of Food Service, Nadine Lorenzen, and her entire team and the nurses have joined the work of this team. We are continuing to provide meals. There's a pickup here at TCP and that's in conjunction with the Pittsburgh Public Schools. But throughout the closure, we had meals that were delivered to homes where families were not able to come out and retrieve meals. We had the drive-up pickup. Meals included breakfast and lunch. We continue to distribute Kylie's Care Kits for kids. And again, this is all a credit to our food service department and our nurses. So, you know, I can't thank them enough for the work that they have done. And above and beyond that, they held a food drive and, you know, raised donations through gift cards for food for our families as well. With a full return or a hybrid model, our food service director will assume planning menus for the entire district and all of the schools will follow the same menu. The CAF managers are going to take care of ordering and maintaining inventory and preparing the bag lunches. CAF staff will report. They will absolutely daily be reporting in a clean uniform with an apron and a mask. They will wear single-use gloves during all of the food preparation and handling as is typical. Food service kitchens are set up to accommodate the social distance guidelines, keeping staff six feet apart while allowing them to complete the tasks of food prep. Families are encouraged to use the online payment system, RevTrack. This reduces the need for handling of money. We would encourage folks who don't use RevTrack to pay with a check. Again, if students are retrieving a bagged lunch in the cafeteria, lines would be kept six feet of distance. And all students will present a school ID so that staff can scan the cards. Parents who opt to stay remote learning even if we open the campus, we will still have a grab-and-go off-site meal option for those folks. Families can sign up and they can either pick the meal pickup option or delivery. And we will be doing the grab-and-go meals out of the Turkey Hill Elementary on Tuesdays and the middle high school staff will be preparing and delivering meals for a five-day on Tuesday mornings. The district-wide remote learning, if everybody in the district goes to a remote learning model, again, we will still have the grab-and-go. Families again can opt to come here to pick up the grab-and-go or ask for delivery. We would be operating on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday out of the Turkey Hill and again, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday at LMHS as well. And our primary school staff would just report to either of those locations for additional support. Transportation. So with the social distancing requirements for bus transportation, we're looking at one student to a seat. Siblings, however, can be seated together on a seat. There would be assigned seating. There would be a maximum occupancy for our big yellow buses between 25 and 27. All students and the driver will be wearing masks. Windows will be open, even in inclement weather to the greatest extent possible. Buses will be disinfected between bus runs and drivers will be trained in safety protocols and they will be trained how to look for any symptomatic bus riders. Pending a final number of riders. So until I get some real concrete numbers for our bus riders, we still may need to look at changing our transportation policies to align with the minimum state mandate, which is K to six, two miles or more from school. We may need to change the Turkey Hill arrival and dismissal time to align with the middle high school. Potentially, we may have enough riders that the 10 buses would be required just for the number of riders at the primary school, which would mean that we would have to put Turkey Hill and maybe sixth grade on a different bus loop. We may have to do that, we may not have to do that. I just want to put it out there that it's a possibility. This is all pending some more concrete numbers relative to the bus ridership. We really do not know just yet what transportation might look like relative to athletics. And we really, I can't make a commitment just yet to the extended day program and transporting students from Turkey Hill to, from TCP to the schools in the morning or from the schools in the afternoon back to TCP. Because essentially, with the update report that went out, we said that we were looking at five classrooms for extended day, 10 students per classroom. That's 50 students. 50 students that would need bus transportation. That's two buses. We'll take a look at it. I'm not saying it can't happen. I'm just saying it may not be able to happen. And I just want to be upfront about that right now. Tech support. As I said, we're going with the one-to-one model. Chromebooks will be made available to all students grades three through 12. iPads will be made available to all students pre-K through two. We will establish help lines that are dedicated to students, particularly at high school age, parents and staff. We will continue to have loner devices. Should there be an issue and a repair required for one of our student devices, we will have additional devices available to loan while that device is being repaired. We will be ensuring all of our devices. We will also be assessing need for internet access. Some folks may have internet access, but it may not be truly reliable. And then we may have families that don't have any internet access, but we would be looking to provide those families with hotspots so that they would have internet access and can access either the remote, full remote learning or the hybrid remote days. We will continue to have folks sign off on our acceptable use form. We will be providing training for staff and for parents. It's going to be important for us to create some Zoom training sessions and maybe even some training videos that parents can access so that they can understand how to utilize the device or access the different apps or software. We would be providing our students instruction on care and use of the devices when we see them at school, assuming that we do open and have them return to school. We would be distributing devices and collecting devices at the end of the year, building-based. So when we went into the shutdown in the spring, all additional devices that were distributed to families were distributed from TCP and they were collected back to TCP. In this upcoming year, the distribution and collection of these devices would be from the building level. We are also developing recovery protocols to recover all of our devices. We are also developing recovery protocols to recover all of our devices and we are building an inventory database. Family engagement. This is another really, really important piece of this upcoming year. We are going to establish building based equity access and engagement teams. It's going to be important that we have a team of folks whose priority is to monitor our student access. Are they engaging? Are they falling off the radar? What seems to be the problem? Is it a technology issue that needs to be rectified? Is there some other type of support that's needed in the home? We cannot afford to let any of our students fall through the cracks. This is a very significant priority focus for us for this upcoming year. We will look to establish protocols to monitor engagement. So the first line, of course, is going to be your classroom teacher. They should be reaching out to parents to provide a welcome anyway, the first week. But if they notice that any of their students are disengaged, they need to be the first line of check in. If they are falling short, not able to connect with the family, they bump that along up to the guidance staff. Guidance staff then take it and reach out. And if they are unsuccessful in reaching, that's when the administration of the building is notified and potentially we're looking to make a home visit. Our nursing. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, we requested permission to post, we're looking to, we actually have moved our middle school nurse, Katie McGuire, into the role for the upcoming year. She not only will be our nursing coordinator, but she will also serve as the district's health and safety officer. She will have frequent and ongoing communications with our local board of health. The Lunenburg Public Schools will follow the protocols issued by DESI for handling of positive COVID-19 cases, whether that's staff, student. And we will also be following any guidance from our local board of health. Each school has established an isolation room for students or staff who are exhibiting COVID-19 symptoms. Our nurses will wear full PPE and that includes the N95 mask, big shields, gloves and gowns. Isolation rooms, if they are used, will be disinfected thoroughly following each use. Our custodians who clean these areas will also wear full PPE like the nurses. Facilities. We are looking to explore either hiring additional part-time custodial staff or using grant funds, COVID grant funds to enhance our overtime account for our custodial salaries. We are going to, we've already installed barrier screens at the middle high school and the primary main offices. These barrier screens are like the Plexiglas barrier so that if a visitor from outside comes into the office, our staff are protected behind a barrier and they can engage with someone. Again, my intention right now is that we will not be having any outside visitors unless absolutely necessary in order to conduct the business at hand. We would continue to have all of our business conducted electronically. We're also looking to have drop off buckets in our vestibule area. So if a parent wanted to come in and drop off lunch for one of their children, forgot lunch in the morning, that's fine. They can drop it in the bucket. We will go out and retrieve it after the parent has left. We are working the same way with our postal deliveries. We have a dedicated bin for our postal mail. When the mailman arrives to the building, the drop is made in that particular bucket. And after the postal carrier has left, the secretarial staff retrieve what was dropped. We do have hand sanitizer stations ready to go for all of our major entryways at all of our buildings. We have selected furniture that will be removed and put in storage to allow us to have the appropriate physical distancing in classrooms and offices. We have enhanced cleaning protocols. We have disinfectants that will be supplied to each classroom and office as well as hand sanitizer for every classroom and office. We have purchased disinfecting spray guns. There's one for each building. We will add additional disinfection periods throughout the day and in the context of the week. And again, we're looking to increase custodial staff or overtime hours for the added cleaning protocols. There was some concern during the public comment around, you know, opportunity for cleaning of the buildings. Some folks have suggested that attending Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, remote, Thursday, Friday for a different cohort would be better. Our staff are coming into the building every day. The buildings need to be cleaned every single night. They will be cleaned every single night. Our facilities will coordinate with our nursing coordinator, our health and safety officer to inventory and manage our PPE supplies, you know, maintaining the stock, knowing when we are going to have to reorder. I can tell you that that reorders don't take a turnaround of about 48 hours. It could be several weeks. We realize this and we will be very vigilant to get orders in early so that we don't run out of PPE. We are going to take a look at the Passios in the Turkey Hill. We can actually manually override and put the ventilation on a higher rate. And we will do so for these two older buildings and that should be adequate. But I will certainly have the board of health sign off on on that so that we can verify for our families and for our staff that the ventilation in the buildings is safe. Facility rental. You know that we have community and youth group users of our facility. As the operator of the facility, we have to ensure that the users comply with the state regulations. And that includes social distancing, closures and participant limits, you know, a maximum number of players on a field as an example, use of PPE. There is a likelihood that there will be an increased cost relative to the cleaning and sanitizing for any of the outside use of facilities. I know that that's not something that, you know, we have as part of our current fee structure. So Mr. Lander and I will be back to you with a recommendation as to what an additional COVID cleaning fee might look like. Human resources. We have conducted an internal review of several district wide systems. How will we manage staff callouts, personal leave requests, course approvals and reimbursement? Reimbursement approval, purchase requisitions and warrant signing, staff attendance and time sheets. The goal here is to handle as much as possible electronically. We want to cut down the handling of paper and paper flow amongst several staff in different offices. Additionally, we have compiled information for our staff that outlines all of their rights and benefits. We have created a secure website that is accessible for our staff that houses all of this information and resource. Our human resource office will be the contact department for any COVID related benefits needed. Confidentially, confidentiality is going to be highly emphasized. It always is. I can tell you that I've never known anyone to be as confidential as as our own Mr. Cassidy. But I can tell you that without a doubt, confidentiality is a high priority for our staff. We will have mandated trainings for all of our Lunenburg employees before students return to school. And there will be new building practices and protocols that will be shared out at the building level by administrators. We know that we can create a framework. But then the actual implementation, building to building is going to have to be a little bit different. We don't have buildings that are exact replicas of each other. So at each level, we will have to put in some unique protocols perhaps to a particular building. Athletics and extracurriculars. So our athletic department clearly is going to implement whatever COVID-19 protocols are issued by MIAA or the Department of Ed or the governor. And it's important, I need to note this again, MIAA does not allow for captains practices. We've had some issues this summer with students attempting to have some student led practices. But as a reminder, MIAA does not allow for those practices. We are still awaiting a decision from MIAA unless somebody can tell me that something came in while we were on this meeting. If we are expecting a decision from MIAA this week. We do know that they have delayed the start of the fall season until September 14th. We do know that they are looking to categorize sports based on risk. And there is a possibility that some fall sports will not run this fall. Relative to clubs and activities, we will not begin any clubs or activities earlier than October 1st. Any and all activities that can be done remotely will be done remotely. Masks will be mandatory if there are any activities that cannot be conducted remotely. All safety protocols that are implemented during the school day would be implemented during any activities after school. School administration will meet with staff who serve in advisorship capacity to go over any expectations and safety precautions and training. And no students will be allowed to attend activities if experiencing symptoms. Extended programming. For extended day. And again, these are preliminary plans. I am not able to say to you right now that we definitely will run extended day. That is still to be determined. However, given that we have five classrooms at TCP and we have to provide the social distancing, we will have to limit 10 students to a room, which means that we now are forcing a cap of 50 students. I can tell you that Mrs. Perry is contacting families to gauge their interest in keeping their registration as is versus families who might be withdrawing their registration or modifying their registration as a result of whatever opening the school embarks on in September. It is entirely possible, though, that we will be needing to conduct a new registration. And the only, the only people who would be eligible to participate in this registration would be folks who are already registered. This would not be open to new parents not already registered. If bus transportation to and from the school is not possible, the program may not run. A COVID fee, just like for facility use, may be necessary. We definitely will again be enhancing our cleaning protocols. Staff, students and parents, anyone in the building has to have a mask and staff and students and parents would provide their own. We're asking parents to be very diligent about this. Do not send your child to the morning extended day if they are not well. Children will be sent home from the program if they are presenting symptoms. Students and staff will have to remain in the same cohort group for the day. Just like we're assigning teachers and students at the schools. Students that come into the extended day program would be assigned to a staff member and that group of students and staff stay together for the day in the room that they are assigned. There's not going to be the flexibility for students to move between classrooms that are set up for different functions. As you know, we reestablished the program here at TCP and we have a game room. We have a homework room and we're not going to be able to rotate students through different classroom setups during the extended day if we can run it. Hygiene, hand washing, sanitizing upon arrival, before and after snack and lunch, before and after bathroom use, in between use of toys. And staff is going to have to be very vigilant and watch for students who are touching their faces. If they touch their face, they've got to wash their hands or hand sanitize. There would be no sharing of food. There would be no toys from home. And we would ensure a distancing of at least three feet between students and six feet between students, staff or between adults in the program. The Early Learning Center. We would have a maximum attendance of 12 students per session. Parents will be responsible for transporting their children. There will be no bus transportation, not even to the afternoon session if a student is in our morning session of pre-K. In the past, we have transported students to the Early Learning Center for the afternoon. We will not be doing that this year. We again enhance protocols, wearing of masks, no sharing of food, no toys from home. The same with the three feet of distance at a minimum between the children in the program, six feet between the children and the adults or between the adults. Hand sanitizing. And again, students should not be brought to the program if they are unwell. They will be sent home if they present with symptoms. And our Community Links Program. This is a grant funded program. This falls under the guidance of Early Education and Care, not the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. On campus, we would be looking to have three programming days outdoors, one hour each. There may be some additional programming. Under a full remote, we would be able to continue through Zoom. We would be able to use a parent portal for testing. We would establish some weekly parent chats and interactive playgroups, story hours. The EEC did this year provide for our program some free books and other supplies that were distributed while we were closed to the families that participate. If we're in a hybrid program, we would be here maybe one to two days on campus for interactive learning. But again, outdoor. There would be no more drop in model. All families would have to register if they plan to attend. Masks are required for everyone. No additional adults. So typically, you know, a parent might come with their child and they may bring a grandparent along with them. No additional adults will be allowed for this upcoming year. And again, even in the hybrid model, there's likely to be free supplies and materials coming through EEC for our families. Staff childcare. So this was something that was included in the update report that was sent out by the reopening team. We surveyed our staff. We know that potentially childcare is a significant hurdle for our teachers. potentially childcare is a significant hurdle for our teachers to be able to return to work. We want our teachers to be able to return to work. If we can assist by providing a childcare option, that would be beneficial for all of the children because we have our teachers returning to the classroom. Children of our staff who fall in the age range between two years and nine months and five years old, we would repurpose the Early Learning Center for our staff's children. We're looking at the possibility of opening some classrooms at TCP for our staff's school-aged children so that if their children are on a remote day, they would bring their children to TCP, they would be assigned to a classroom. We would keep them socially distanced at six feet apart. There would be adult supervision, not a teacher, but an adult supervising the room to monitor, to make sure that everybody is safe and appropriate, assist them where they can. But the purpose is not to provide them instruction. It's just to provide them a place where they can report to do their remote learning day with adult supervision. If this is a significant enough need, we may need to repurpose the classrooms that are, that are currently slated for extended day and have the staff repurposed as well to supervision of these remote learning classrooms for our staff's children. We're still trying to assess the level of need. We need to break down the data that we received from the survey of the staff to determine how many classrooms we think we might need and can we potentially create those classrooms, staff those classrooms, and still run our extended day or our Early Learning Center or even a remote learning day for some of our members of the community? So that parents could potentially send their children to TCP for the day where they would be assigned to a classroom with adult supervision and they could log on and do their remote learning day here. I don't have enough data yet. I don't have enough details worked out yet to tell you whether or not I can provide this option for our staff or if I can provide it for our staff and to some degree to the members of the community. It's still a work in progress. So how many hours later are we? Three, four? How long have I been talking? I'll get to the recommendations now. My recommendation would be to open hybrid. We think that we have what we need to put all the safety precautions in place to safely return our staff and our students in a hybrid model with fewer numbers on the campus. We would be making the recommendation based on our survey. You know, that was another thing that came up during the during the public comment relative to, you know, it was misleading because every, everybody had to answer the question about masks for pre-K, K, and 1. However, we did ask every single parent to indicate the grade level of each child they were completing the survey for, so we were able to sort it and pull out just the respondents for pre-K, K, and 1. There were 222 responses. At the pre-K level, 50% of the parents indicated yes that they would be sending their child to school with a mask, to wear a mask during the day. And at the K and 1, the rates of yes, I would send my child to school with a mask to wear in school were at the rate of 70% and 75% respectively saying yes. So the majority of our parents who responded to the survey, and again, we did not have 100% completion. We're still looking to contact families that did not complete the survey. But clearly, 50% at the pre-K level and 70 to 75% say yes at the kindergarten and first grade level. They will have their child wear a mask. I'm going to make the recommendation on behalf of the reopen planning team. We looked at this data. We discussed this recommendation. We're recommending that Lunenburg Public Schools require a mask for all students. I can tell you that this will provide an added measure of reassurance for our staff. I can tell you that through the union leadership, I know that staff have indicated, the staff who teach at those grade levels, that they would either potentially be requesting a change of grade assignment and in some cases even a change in building assignment so that they would not have to report to work in a school building where children are not wearing a mask. So the recommendation of the team is for the school committee to adopt the policy that all students would be required to wear a mask. Now, that said, there are still going to be legitimate disability and medical reasons why a child could be exempted from wearing a mask. We will still have to honor those disability and medical requests. I am also going to recommend that we require all families that are opting for a remote learning. So should we agree that we're going to open remotely or open hybrid, return to the campus in some form? For those families that are opting to stay fully remote, I'm asking for them to register each quarter. So at least I can create some stability in classroom assignment. It's easier for me if a parent sends their child back to campus and has some concerns three, four weeks into the school year and says, you know what? I am not feeling comfortable with this anymore. I want my child to be remote. That's easier. I don't have to be sure that I can enforce social distancing, moving them into a remote assignment. However, coming out of a remote assignment and back onto the physical campus, that may not be as easy. I need to ensure that I have appropriately assigned students to staff so that everyone can be socially distanced and safe. So I'm asking that parents make the commitment and register for remote, if the district is not in remote, register for remote a quarter at a time. Two weeks prior to the end of the quarter, we can survey the families who are in remote and ask them if they intend to remain remote or if they wish to return to the campus, should we actually be in a hybrid model and, and on campus. Additionally, I'm going to ask that, that we have families complete a registration for bus transportation. This will give me a concrete number of families that will require the bus transportation. I can provide this information to DBus and to Vanpool and they can set up their bus routes appropriately. It's going to be very difficult if people are allowed to flex as needed. It really will be very, very helpful if we can make the commitment at least a quarter at a time and provide some sense of stability. So as I've already said, I, I don't think that there's any possible way that we can open full. There are too many challenges and there's too much cost related to that opening, cost that is not even going to be covered even with the additional COVID grant monies that are coming to the district. So in my mind, I cannot, I cannot open, I can't recommend that we can open full. I can recommend that we open hybrid. We of course absolutely could open remotely. However, if remote is the option that you choose to endorse, based on the fact that we're saying then that we feel that the risk is too great for staff and students to return to the campus, I believe that part and parcel of that decision to open fully remote would mean that we cancel our fall athletics and potentially additional seasons of athletics. We should be canceling our extended day program, our Early Learning Center, all clubs and activities that cannot be run virtually. And we will definitely have to reevaluate our staffing needs. There may be positions that we need to cut. That's the end of it, Liz. Those are just extra slides. Liz, do you want to put up the the survey results? The graphs? So as you can see here, we had a pretty balanced response. Pretty equal responses from all of the different buildings. Again, we went over the more detailed breakdown of the pre-K, K, and 1 mask question. Again, pre-K parents indicating at about 50% that they would require, they would send their child to school with a mask and 70 and 75% responding in grades K and 1 that they would send their student with a mask. This question here is around the full return to, to campus with three feet of social distancing. You can see that that was pretty split. About, about 53% of folks that completed the survey, again, we did not have 100% completion here, but about 50% feel that they would return their student even in a full return, three feet apart. Would you send your student back to school in a hybrid model? About 50% of students and five to six feet of social distancing. And you can see here, 78% of the families that completed the survey said that they would be comfortable sending their students back to campus in a hybrid open. And this question here now is, would you opt out of a return and keep your, your student with remote learning? And about 34% said that they would opt for the remote learning. Bus transportation. Would you send your student on a bus with one student per seat, a mask at all times, and windows open? And again, that was pretty, pretty evenly split. 51% said yes. We did ask the question about how there's, you know, the students would be traveling to school. And you can see the blue, the blue section of the pie here, just about 40% would be bus. The red, which is almost 42%, is parent transportation. The yellow wedge would be student-driven. So at our high school level, some of our students drive themselves and maybe siblings and neighbors. And the, the walker category is green. I think perhaps the NA might have to do with folks who know for sure that they are going to stay remote. So there's no need for transportation of any kind. Relative to reliable internet access. Do you have reliable internet access? The blue, almost 98%, yes. Food service question. Would your student participate in a school lunch if, in a full return or a hybrid model? 44% are the yes, that's the blue. And would your student participate in the grab and go if we're in remote learning? And you can see that that drops way down to 13% for yes. And if students are participating in school lunch during remote learning, and that's the full remote, I think, would you pick up or would you need delivery? The red wedge there is just about 20%. That's the number of folks that would need delivery. The, the blue portion would be those folks who would be looking to come in and pick up a grab and go. There was one other question that came up, or comment during public comment. Actually, two. There was a suggestion that our BCBA's could work on something to help parents acclimate their children to wearing a mask. That actually went out as an attachment to the letter that went out two days ago. Our BCBA, Mary Young, has already put all of that together, so families do have access to that information already and it is posted on our website. And there was another question relative to policies. I can tell you that there have been some communications coming out from MAS-C, the Mass Association of School Committees, relative to some policies that we may need to give some consideration to. Attendance, as an example, might be one. You know, this, this notion that if students are willfully non-compliant with safety protocols, including a mask, that they would then be mandated to the remote learning model. Again, we are going to need to involve counsel, legal counsel with, with some of these changes that are on the horizon. But clearly, I think, you know, once we make a decision as to how to proceed, what's the plan for how we're going to open in the fall, we can start digging in deep down to the details of how this is all going to work. And we can get down to the level of making recommendation around policy or suspension of some policies that, that may not be appropriate during this particular upcoming year. Addition of some temporary policies for the upcoming year, et cetera. So all of the things that, that folks addressed as concern in the public comment early, they are already on our radar. We are working on them. So hopefully that's reassuring to folks. Is anybody still awake? There's a lot of information to take in.
Indeed. Indeed. Are you ready for us to have some discussion about this? Are you okay for us to do that?
I think so. I think, you know, I, I think that if you're, if you're going to entertain some conversation around a remote open, I think it's important to give consideration to the other components that would likely be lost with the decision to open remote. You know, the extended day, the athletics and, and the, and the like. I don't, I don't envy the decision that you I don't, I don't envy the decision that you have to make, I really don't. This is not an easy decision. There's no one solution, believe me, we have been all around it, inside, outside, upside down, looking at it every which way. We recognize that this year ahead for families, it's going to be very difficult. It is absolutely going to be very difficult and we're going to do the best we can. But there's no one model that's going to work for everybody. There's no one model that's going to be best suited for all of our students. And unfortunately, in a small district with limited resources and limited staff, we don't have the luxury that perhaps some of the larger districts have where they can afford to allow their parents to pick any option. We don't have that luxury, we don't have the resources to make that work. I wish I could say that we did. I really do. I think we've come forward with the best thinking and the best recommendation given the first priority is to the physical and mental health and wellbeing of our students and our staff. And if, if we don't meet that, we're, we're not going to be successful with any model of learning. Those two things need to be addressed first and foremost. I need staff and students to feel safe and comfortable when they come into the school. I need them to be thinking about the learning and not thinking about the fear or the anxiety about, am I too close? Is that person taking their mask off? Am I going to be sick? Right? We don't, we don't want that to be the focus. We want the kids to come back, we want the joy for the teaching and the learning to be evident. As educators, as I said, we haven't had eyes on our kids. By September, we're talking six months. Six months. That's a long time. That's a long time. And that's part of the reason that we chose the day on, day off model. You know, you go for a week on, week off. Week off, the kids are away from us for nine days. They're away from us two weeks of every month. If they're in a, a home that is not a healthy place for them to be, not a supportive place for them to be, that's a worry. They can fall off the radar, they're going to take an academic slide for a week at a time. That's not in the best interests of our kids. I can understand the rationale for some parents feeling like, have the cohort come two days in a row, have a day off, have them come two days in a row. But still, that puts the kids away from us for up to potentially five days. In this day on, day off, we, we see them every other day. The longest stretch of time we don't have eyes on them is what, three days? We're, we're doing the best we can to keep them in front of us as consistently as we can. That's what we were talking about for continuity of the, of the learning. It's super important for us to have them in front of us. I, I am completely realistic. I think that this is a model that's been well thought through, well planned, and we are going to continue to hone in on the details. Safety is priority one. We believe we can return the staff and the students in a hybrid model to a safe learning environment. That said, the reality is that every single September, allergy season starts kicking up, cold season starts ticking up, cold and flu, October, November. The reality is with a strict stay at home if you are sick policy for staff means that I am likely going to run into an inability to provide subs to put adults in classrooms. And I will probably have to, based on staff attendance, move a building or the district into a remote model. Because if I can't have adults in the classrooms, I don't have a safe environment for them to return to. And I know that that is going to be a last minute notification to parents. I wish I could promise you that I would be able to provide a week notice to parents that we're going to have to go into remote. We're not going to, the reality is we're not going to have that luxury. My promise is that as soon as we know we have to switch to remote, parents are going to know that we have to switch to remote. I think if you ask most educators, if we could just get the kids in front of us for as many weeks as we can get them in front of us, assess the trauma, assess the, the mental wellbeing, assess what the intervention need is for mental health for our kiddos, and to assess the academic intervention that is needed. Having them with us on the campus in person, it's not going to be the same, there's no two ways about that. It is not going to be the same. But at least it gives us a chance to build a sense of community. And if we have to slide into remote, we've at least laid the groundwork for that. Part of the reason that remote worked to the degree that it did work last spring was because we had months together as a, as a school building community, as a classroom community. The relationships, the safety net, the trust, that was all built. That was all built. It was there as the foundation so that when we had to roll into remote, we at least had that foundation to stand on. I think, like I said, if you ask most educators, they, the separation between teachers and their, and their students, it's palpable. The first week we were in closure in March, I had staff emailing me frantic. What was going to be allowable, they needed to get eyes on their kids. How can I do it? Can I do it Facebook streaming live? Can I do it YouTube? They, they were frantic to get eyes on their kids and reassure their kids that it was okay. So, you know, for, for folks who might imagine that teachers just don't want to come back to work, that could not be the furthest thing from the truth. Our family's kids, I said this at graduation, they become our kids. They're our kids. We need to see them.
Thank you. I think that a good way for us to begin as committee members is, I'll go down the line. What questions people have in any of your presentation? Any of our committee members, direct questions? Then we can begin more discussion once our questions are answered. Does that, does that work for you, Dr. Burnham?
Absolutely.
Then I'm just, I will begin, Ms. Kelly. I'm just going to start and go down the line, committee members. So Ms. Kelly, any specific questions you have on any portion of the presentation that Dr. Burnham gave that will help you to, you know, to, to be clear about what model you would support?
Dr. Burnham, I know you had mentioned that most of the teachers are on board. With the teachers that are not necessarily on board, is it skewed? Is there more teachers at the primary school or more teachers at the high school? Is there more teachers in a certain building that are unwilling to come back to campus for safety reasons?
I think, you know, potentially we could ask Lisa LeBlanc to weigh in here. I know that she's had more conversation with the faculty and might have a better handle on the building-based feeling. I know that what she had shared with me at one point was that, you know, the Turkey Hill building is an older building. The staff may have some level of concern around ventilation. And again, I, I promise you that if it is not safe, it's not safe for staff, it's not safe for students, we won't be opening that building. That's the bottom line. But if there are things that we can do to ensure that the ventilation is adequate, we are absolutely going to do that. So I know that that is a particular concern, building-based. I can't say right now, I know that the primary staff, there was some level of concern that if if we follow just the DESI guidance and pre-K K and one are not required to wear a mask, that raises the, the level of anxiety and discomfort about returning to that building for staff. I think, you know, in general, we did push out a communication to our staff and we asked folks to contact Mr. Cassidy if they felt that they were in a position that they would be needing to avail themselves of some of the benefits that are available to them, particularly under COVID. As an example, childcare now is an allowable reason for FMLA leave. You know, so again, that's another reason why it's important for us, if we can, to provide an opportunity to, for childcare for our staff so that they can come back to work. I know that the, the CDC has added to the, the categories of he- health concerns that make one eligible, labeling you as a vulnerable, a more vulnerable population to becoming significantly ill with, with the virus. I don't know, I can't say exactly how many staff have contacted Mr. Cassidy at this time. I know that they have started to, he's counseling them. You know, some staff may be looking for leave. Some staff might be looking for accommodations in order to safely return. So I, I don't have a, I, I don't have an exact comment for you relative to that. Maybe Mr. Cassidy could, could enlighten us or, or maybe Mrs. LeBlanc could, could weigh in.
I think right now I've, I've got about 17 employees at, at some level of contact with the, the HR department from daycare issues to health concerns and then employees that do have disabilities that may be impacted by COVID. So I, I am in different phases of, of discussions with every single one of those employees. I just have a feeling, you know, whatever, whatever happens tonight, I, I may get more. So, you know, I just, yeah, I, just to, to let everybody know, I'm likely going to be sending another reminder that, you know, I am waiting for, for people to, to reach out to me. But I think, I know some staff members are, are seeing what the decision is tonight before approaching the HR office. So, so we're, we're dealing with that, with those concerns, I'm in touch with the principals about some potentials, no names, but just, just some challenges that they, just, they, they need to be ready for. So, and some may not even happen. So we, we are communicating from, from employee to HR and then HR to school-based level on some of these issues. So I didn't, so to the committee, I don't have a clear picture of, of what the, the staff that's going to be out, but at this particular moment. But they are, they are coming forth, which is good, I'm glad that they feel comfortable. And, and they all want to work. You know, and so they're, they're trying to, they all want to come back, at least the ones I've spoken to. But they do have concerns and it's not necessarily, I haven't heard any facility issues yet, Dr. Burnham. It's, it's, it's their own personal health and daycare issues, to be honest with you. So.
Lisa?
Hi, hi, thanks for letting me speak. I would say that both Kate and Mike just really mentioned everything that hit the big points there. All of our teachers want to get back to work. They have varying needs in terms of accommodations or, or how to take care of their mental and medical, physical health, all of those things. But we're really confident in our administrators at the top level and our building administrators. And yes, our, our building members in Turkey Hill have the most concerns. It's our oldest building. Doesn't necessarily mean it has all the problems, but that's where we want to pour our resources, our time and focus into making sure that just because they're in that building, it doesn't leave them more vulnerable than our educators at the, you know, new Lunenburg Middle School, High School or at our more recent primary school. Really important to us that every educator, every educator, every student be equally safe across the board. And, and the masks is really appreciated, a lot of parents have mentioned it, but that was our biggest primary concern by far. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly, do you have any additional questions?
No, not at this time, thank you though.
Ms. Shapiro?
Hi, um, so I guess my biggest question here is, um, so I know you mentioned in the FAQ document that you shared that you can't require anybody to share with the people they've been in contact to if they have tested positive. But would there be a way to maybe encourage that they do share that information, especially at the high school level? Just because I feel like where they're not going to be operating in cohorts, there's going to be a lot of people in contact with a lot of different people. And I know that would be a big concern for me as a high school student, seeing like a lot of different people every day and not necessarily knowing where they're at medically. Like that might be something that would keep me at home.
So, you know, it really does come down to confidentiality laws around health. I would say that, you know, one of the things that we're going to have to do at all levels, but you know, including the high school, kids are going to have to have assigned seats. If somebody has symptoms and they go see the doctor, the doctor orders a test. Test comes back. Doctor notifies the patient, you know, you're positive. The Board of Health is also notified. The Board of Health then takes over contact tracing. The Board of Health is going to contact us to get information from us relative to who might be the close contacts for these individuals. The Board of Health is then going to make those, those contacts to those individuals. From our perspective, the Board of Health is likely going to say, yep, based on these situations, these teachers, these kids have to go into a 14-day quarantine. That's when we, the school department, end up notifying families. You're in this class, right? You are now in a 14-day quarantine. But we are not, we're not going to have that information from, from students. You know, I mean, we're, we're all assuming that people are going to follow the guidelines, right? Like right, right now, if you leave the state, when you return to the state, you're supposed to quarantine for 14 days. If you've been outside of the Maryland area, maybe there are people who aren't doing that. But we have no way to require or, or enforce something of that level. I think, I think Katie McGuire is still, still on. Katie, if you're still on, maybe you could unmute and address the, the process and the confidentiality components.
Yes, it's a useful, it's very well talkable. If the student is identified that typically the Board of Health would be notified, um, through their Mav and their public health system that there was a positive test. They're going to look to us to provide information, just like you said, who was sitting around that student with the cohort is and will support them with providing that information. From that point though, the public health nurses will take over putting students or staff into quarantine or isolation and, and they will do the follow-up calls, phone calls, and then release them back to, um, the school. They will, we have, they will give us a release that they're okay to return to the school. So we're not going to be giving any information to the school community, but we do, uh, we are mandated to share that information with the Board of Health. I, is that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I mean, it's possible with, uh, you know, multiple quarantines going on that we may have to notify that we're moving the building to a remote model until, you know, enough of our staff and students can return to the hybrid model. But the, the notification of individual, it's, it's just not, it, it would definitely, it won't be us providing that information to families.
Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro, did you have any additional questions?
No, that was it for now. Thank you though.
Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Burnham, for your thorough presentation. You answered a lot of my questions in the presentation. But I think also educating the parents, that thirty percent who want to go remote, I think educating them with the fine details, I think will help reduce that number. Face masks, definitely, I think that will be a huge factor as well. Uh, in regards to face masks, one question that came up during your presentation that I wrote down about was, uh, if you could expand on the mask breaks, just to kind of maybe provide some scenario. There'd be concerns of like airflow, maybe the next group or next person that goes in to do a, a mask break, is this an indoor/outdoor activity? Cause obviously taking off masks could be an opportunity to, to spread.
Yep. Uh, for the most part, I think that what we're envisioning is, uh, scheduled mask breaks outside. So a teacher would take a classroom outside, kids would, you know, be distanced. I don't know if, if that means that we will have marked areas in an area outside where kids would go and stand, you know, uh, even for little ones, if, if you had a, a rope with ribbon tied every six feet and they just grab the rope where the ribbon is, they stay six feet apart. I know that the kindergarten teachers have already, uh, purchased hula hoops to keep kids in a little, um, bubble to keep them away from each other. So there's lots of creative ways that we can, can work to make it age-appropriate and fun, but, but safely distanced. Largely, we envision that the breaks would be outside where, you know, you've got open air. I think in the inclement weather, we're probably talking about moving into a bigger area like the cafeteria, um, with windows open. Potentially, if we thought that the airflow was an issue, you might have fans moving the air. But we will definitely be providing structured, scheduled times for kids. Potentially at the older, uh, level, you know, maybe the high school. There might be some designated areas in the hallway where there's a, an open window at the end of the hallway where you could go stand on the mark at the end of the hallway, take your mask off, um, but be near the window. And then, you know, independently return, you, you wouldn't necessarily have to go out with a cohort of twenty-five students in your classroom to take a, to take a break. We're still fine-tuning all of the details, um, but clearly, good airflow, uh, is an important piece. The, uh, ability to keep the social distance is an important piece. And making sure that they're frequent enough throughout the day. I don't know how many of you have, uh, spent more than, you know, a little bit of time wearing one of these. But, you know, leave it on for three hours plus and, and it really does wear on you. It's exhausting. It's tiring. The kids are going to need a break, but I will tell you that the teachers are also going to need the break. So like I said, by and large, I envision that this will be a classroom event where the teacher actually gets to go to and take the mask off and have a water break. The kids have some water. They get some movement. They're outside with some air. It, it's not going to be a once-a-day thing. Uh, it, that is just not going to cut it. It, it's going to have to be frequent. But we will start to work at the building level to design schedules and locations and mechanisms, if you will, that would be developmentally appropriate for the kids throughout the day.
Thank you. Another question that came up in your presentation, you had mentioned if a certain grade level had a reduced number of students who were going to go remote, say they wanted remote only and there was only two students, you would set them up with an online course without Lunenburg, uh, public school teacher. I was wondering if it's, if it's possible that we could set them up or assign them a teacher so that the parents had a, a teacher to reach out to, so the students had that kind of connection with staff members.
There'll definitely still be some sort of staff connection, whether it's a paraprofessional or a teacher, uh, yet to be determined. But as an example, you know, we might have a, a couple of fifth graders, a couple of fourth graders, a couple of third graders, depending on the number, depending on the staff that you would have available to teach remotely, there's a possibility that you could do a multi-age classroom and have one of our teachers teach it. But if you can't really pull together a grouping large enough, uh, to dedicate us, a whole teacher to the prep and delivery of curriculum for that group and we assign them to a, uh, a program, we, you might remember through the budget process, we talked about moving away from virtual high school to a different software, Edgysir. And Edgysir, you know, if kids want to sign up for Mandarin, they can. It, it's great. But we also can use that for credit recovery for kids that don't pass their courses at high school level. They can take that over the summer, we, we scoop their credit and move on. If we've got kids who are out for extended periods of time due to illness, rather than a home tutor going for medical home tutoring, we could actually sign them up and get them, um, onto one of these courses. And a teacher could check in with Edgysir and monitor the progress. We certainly, regardless, even if kids are assigned, um, to something like Edgysir, we still will have staff assigned to monitor and check in with families because again, we don't want them falling through the cracks. We don't want them taking an academic slide because nobody's kind of watching and making sure that they're, that they're logging on every day. So the monitoring piece, even, even if we use a platform like Edgysir, there, there still would be some staff monitoring, um, of, of all those students.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
That's it for me.
Ms. Arshambau?
Thank you. I, I did want to, before I asked the couple of questions I had, I wanted to thank Dr. Burnham for her very transparent and very complete presentation and for her attention to the benefit of the whole child. I think it's very important that, that in doing these very, very big elaborate plans with, with all the staff that you had involved, the kids didn't get lost in it. And, and I think that that's a very big credit to you. So I appreciate that. Um, I did have the same question Brian had. Having taught many multi-age classes, I, I know that it is possible, though challenging to do, particularly under this particular setup. And, um, I was glad to hear that there would be staff connections for our kids regardless of what the situation was. And for people knowing me, they're going to think this is an odd question for me to come up with. The funds, do you feel that you have the funding between the grants from the state and, and I know that the town has been as generous as they possibly can be, knowing that there is a November town meeting that maybe if we needed to, we could ask about. But do you feel the funding is there to adequately support this effort? This hybrid model that you're recommending?
Adequately? Yes, I think that we can do the best we can with what we've got. As usual, we will have to be extraordinarily creative and, um, truly, a lot of this is going to depend on the goodwill and the good hearts of our educators. I would be lying if I didn't say that I think we could do a great deal better if we had more resources. But I, I don't think that the plan that we have put together will not be adequate to support the kids and, and what they need. I, you have my word that if I should find that they are not adequate to support what we need, I will be back in front of you to let you know that, uh, what we anticipated was more, it was more significant than what we anticipated and, um, what we're doing is not currently satisfactory, if, if that should be the case. But I think based on what we're anticipating, knowing the staff that we have, the skillset, the expertise that we have, stretching every single bit of the COVID grant that we can stretch to meet the needs that we're anticipating. I, I, I think that we're in a good spot. But, but honestly, i- if things are much worse than what we anticipate, I'll, I'll be back. I'll be back with a different plan, uh, because not supporting the kids is not an option. It's just not an option. We have to do what we have to do to make that work. Whatever it takes. Thank you.
Ms. Arshambau, do you have any additional questions?
No, that was it.
Dr. Burnham, I have a couple of questions in, um, between the, um, the hybrid model and the fully remote model. Um, in the full remote model, you talked about staff potentially on Google meets, um, and in classrooms, um, uh, daily in, in, in the remote setting. Would that still take place in the hybrid setting? Because those sounded to be good things.
They are.
Administrators and administrators popping in, whether it be from support or, or an evaluative standpoint, would that be happening in hybrid as well?
It will happen in hybrid as well. Um, the challenge with hybrid, the remote part of hybrid, while some kids are remote, the teachers are not. They are currently in front of a classroom with kids on campus. So our teachers cannot be fully in front of students on campus and simultaneously fully in front of kids that are working from home. We talked about the possibility of, um, you know, simulcasting, uh, in real time, the teacher teaching in the classroom setting so that the students at home could log in and participate via computer. We just are not going to have the bandwidth and quite frankly, um, there's a debate raging right now between IT directors across the country relative to, um, is that truly secure? You, you're broadcasting essentially students at the same time as you're broadcasting, um, the teacher. So there's a debate as to whether or not it's appropriate and privacy and, you know, in accordance with regulations, et cetera, et cetera. And, and that coupled with the fact that we just are not going to have the bandwidth to do it, unfortunately, um, you know, that, that's just, uh, uh, an option that we had to set aside. Now, that said, all of this, of course, is pending, working out the details and coming to, uh, a memorandum of agreement with our unions around what their job roles and responsibilities and what their day is going to look like under whatever model we move forward with. But imagine, if you will, um, I'm a teacher, I'm on campus, I have my Tuesday kids in front of me and my cohort B is at home. Well, I go through my normal school day schedule and I get to my prep block. And maybe during my prep block, maybe not the entire prep block, but maybe a portion of my prep block, twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes, might be me hopping on my Google Meet with the twelve kids that I have at home. And we have a little bit of time together in real time and we talk about how things have been going for them with the assignments that they've been working on so far this morning. And then maybe prep them for what's coming up for the afternoon. Maybe there's another check-in at the end of the day, just like teachers on campus all the time have after-school help time. Maybe there's another section of the afternoon where, you know, the teacher is available for office hours, where parents could email or students could email and get some support. Now, in that model, teachers are losing their prep time. They're actually prepping for instruction on campus and instruction off-campus. And we're, we're taking away their prep time. That's where the full remote Monday, remote for all kids on Monday. Yes, we're envisioning that to start the day, there might be a Google Meet, you know, you do your morning meeting with your classes or you do a check-in of some type, maybe it's a social emotional type check-in or, um, maybe it's even a mini lesson of some sort. But then the rest of Monday would be chunked out and teachers are scheduled for different kinds of collegial work. Right? They're working in grade-level teams, prepping and planning. They're working, um, in their, uh, student support team, looking at, at students who are struggling, looking at interventions, is it working, is it not working? Our family engagement, who's flying off the radar, who's not connecting, who's reached out to these folks? There would be, there would be a schedule on Monday for teachers. Their day would be set. They would know that they have different blocks of time during the day. I have some individual prep time. I have some time that I'm prepping with a team. I'm in a, you know, a TST model, what have you. But the kids are, are largely working remote. Yes, they would still have that check-in it earlier in the day through a live, uh, meet. As I said, moving forward for next year, um, yes, last, last spring, the minimum requirement for everybody was Google Classroom. Moving ahead for this year coming, Google Classroom and Google Meet. That real-time connection with kids is going to be critical. It's a piece that a lot of teachers jumped into, even though it wasn't mandatory, many, many, many teachers jumped into and they thought it was the best part of their day, quite frankly. They loved getting on the Google meets with the kids. I mean, there was one middle school teacher who told me multiple times, I'm just so excited every time they all show up. They all show up. I'm so excited. You know, so teachers did see the benefit in having that forum, uh, to connect with, with kids. So that's a guarantee. It's going to be tricky. There's no doubt about it. Trying to find that balance between I'm a teacher on campus, in front of students on campus, but I have to also service the kiddos who aren't on campus with me right now. Right? Which is why the day, just one day off, like, okay, you're here and then you're remote, but then you're back with me again. Right? There's, there's not a whole lot of time there to, to really slide. You're going to be back in front of me day after next and I'm going to make sure that you, uh, are getting caught up with where you need to be. So it, it is going to be tricky, um, but I have, I have every confidence. The conversations that transpired last year between, um, the whole leadership team, all the administrative team and the, the leadership of the teacher union, the para-union, our building leadership teams, our department heads. Everybody's invested in finding a solution that allows teachers to teach and have quality teaching and learning happening. We have to, we have to recognize that this is a Herculean undertaking. They have to reimagine and redesign everything. Just because we're returning to a classroom, does not mean we're returning to classroom instruction as it was pre-COVID. I cannot have kids in my classroom working in a group. They have to work in a group on their computer. I have to redesign all of my lessons, all of my activities. There is nothing, nothing that is going to be untouched. As a teacher reaches into their file drawer or their digital portfolio or wherever they archive all of their awesome materials, they are going to have to reimagine everything. The planning time for teachers is critical, critical. We all agree that we want what, all the teaching and learning, regardless of the model, it has to be quality. And if it's going to be quality, they need time to prep and plan. We're going to do the very best we can. I wish I could say that for the 12 kids at home, I had enough staff that I could put somebody in front of them, well, in front of them virtually on the other end of a computer for the entire day. We're not going to be able to do that.
Office hours. That was something I saw in a slide briefly you brought up again. Every teacher will have office hours as they have after-school help available. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And one question regarding sports or activity participation, that if that were, say, in a hybrid model, if a student opts to for remote learning themselves, can they still participate if there was a hybrid model in sports or activities that are on campus, provided they had transportation?
I think that that's something that we're going to have to give some serious consideration to. The commissioner raised this as an issue in a conference call late last week. If you're making the decision that your child is going to stay in a full remote model because the risk is too great to return them to in-person learning, why is the risk not too great to return to a contact sport? There's a disconnect there. Right? You can't make the argument that I am concerned for the health and well-being of my child. They are not going to return to the campus. I don't want to risk exposure, but I really, really, really want them to play football. I don't know that we would be doing the right thing if we said, sure, if you're not comfortable coming back to learn, it's okay, you can come play sports. I don't know that that's the right message that we want to be sending. If the concern is genuine, and I don't doubt that for many families, the concern is absolutely genuine. But there's a disconnect there. Why is there a high level of concern to return to learning but not that same high level of concern to return to sports? Ryan?
I guess I would add to that. I feel like some parents are more concerned about the indoor activities versus outdoor activities. For an example, let's say there's a golfer who has asthma. He doesn't want to go in the building because of his asthma, but if he's distance, golf especially, a very distant sport, he may want to keep participating in golf. Just as an example.
Potentially. I mean, it's possible that we could maybe consider it on a case-by-case basis, but I think maybe at this point, we might be a little bit premature because we're not sure yet what MIAA is going to do with the fall season. So I would hate for this one issue to kind of hang us up a bit here. I think maybe we revisit this conversation after we see what the recommendation is for MIAA.
Absolutely. It was just a question there. And with the live streaming and bandwidth, would there be, how is that different than, say, a morning meeting if you're seeing just a teacher? If there's no, if students were being able to watch? And I understand the bandwidth might not be there for the entire, every teacher in the district to do it every day. But if it was simply teacher in front of whiteboard versus a pan of the classroom and there was potentially some rotation or something where teachers would have access to do that to not bust out all the bandwidth?
I think the best one to address some of the debate here would be Mr. Malandrinos.
Hi there. So the big debate is really going around student interaction in the classroom during that morning meeting, or whatever you want to call it. If the students were to participate in any way or to even just make some noise, that would be recording of students in the classroom. That's the big debate that's going on on most of the listeners that I'm paying attention to right now. We cannot record any students in the classroom. Any stream that goes out live can certainly be recorded by anyone that's watching it. So anyone that's watching it, if there's any student interaction in the classroom during that live broadcast, is potentially opening the district up to some some risk of students being recorded that didn't want to be recorded in a classroom setting. So that's basically, that's the big concern. And also the fact, that concern coupled with the fact that we can't possibly do this for every classroom at once. As soon as it came up, we kind of shouted it just because it's, number one, it's a huge undertaking. The technology to get that done is extremely expensive, reasonably difficult to implement. Training teachers would be a problem. And then in the end, we'd have all that done and we may still have issues with students being recorded. So that's why we sort of tabled that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that, those were the particular questions I had. So, committee, I'll open it up at the moment to, if anyone wants to raise their hand and comments, thoughts, concerns as we now, you know, what's still out there, what's in your mind as we're beginning to entertain that thought of, you know, putting forward a motion. Ms. Shapiro?
I guess, first of all, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for all your thoughts and like how much care that everybody's clearly putting into this. But I guess I just want to say that while putting any students and staff in the building at all is scary and definitely comes with risk, I wholeheartedly agree with Dr. Burnham's point about how important it is to just have the students in the building at least for a little bit at first because especially since there's a possibility that we'll have to go fully remote in the future, I think it's really important to have them in the building at least for a little bit. And so I think while there definitely are risks and it's terrifying to take those risks, I think it's important for the students' mental well-being and there's always a chance to reevaluate and change if things aren't working out. And so I personally agree with everything that Dr. Burnham has said and I fully support the hybrid plan.
Thank you. Open it up. And does anyone else want to jump in? Not all at once. Ms. Arshambo?
I'll jump in. I was going to say this when I made my vote, but I'll say it now. I don't think there's anything that we could possibly do that is, as Dr. Burnham said, that is going to fit every child and every family. Everybody's in a different spot. Everybody's doing the best they can. I think getting kids in front of teachers is very important. That being said, I think that with my grandmother hat on and I think about my little ones, I would be nervous about sending them back to school. I think that this plan is extremely well thought out. They have worked very hard to, all kinds of people, to work on every small little detail. I told Dr. Burnham before, and I will say it again, that the most important thing, of course, are the children's safety and their emotional well-being. Once that is in place, then they can learn. I do believe the hybrid plan allows for that. But I would say this, another thing I really like about the hybrid plan is to go hybrid is allowing some families that need to, for a lot of legitimate reasons, to be remote. If we went totally remote, we cannot allow some families to be hybrid. So I'm going to put on my primary school teacher hat and say what I have always said to families for a million years. Families are the best and first advocate for any child, always. You know your kids better than we do, when I taught, not as school committee member, but when I taught, I knew my students well, but not like their families do. So families need to feel secure in their decision. And if your mother-in-law doesn't like your decision or if the neighbor next door doesn't like your decision, that's too bad. You are your child's best advocate. So by going with the hybrid model, we are allowing families to make that decision. And I wouldn't do it if I didn't think it was safe, if I didn't think it had been well thought out. And if I didn't think, if there were a problem, there would be any hesitation in running, in moving to remote. But I think it's important, this gives families the most choice. And I appreciate that and that's my soapbox for this evening.
Mr. Leighton?
I think as Dr. Burnham said, safety is number one. We need to eliminate any safety threats, ensure the safety for the students and teachers and the faculty. It has to be safe. If it's not safe, parents will pull their children. Educators will not return and they'll force it to a remote. So it's just safety number one. We need to provide parents and students with more resources so that they're successful and that they, and we are able to deal with the social and emotional issues and the needs. And just give students and parents more opportunities to provide feedback and ask questions and make sure they know they're being heard and that it's safe. Similar to the Zoom forum last week too. But with the superintendent's recommendation and the LEA majority supporting hybrid, I support hybrid with the 2021 year with masks for everyone.
Thank you. Personally, I echo everything everyone has said. One of the things I really liked in the presentation was about the frequent different ways to check in regarding feedback. Because as the superintendent said, this is, there's nothing ideal about any of this for anyone. And that's the understatement of, you know, probably the decade. So I feel like, you know, the plans to have frequent check-ins via surveys, via meetings, being some, you know, some, just lots of different modalities for check-in and continual feedback and work if things are not working. Because the reality is, this is so far, you know, a comprehensive plan and will need to continue to be drilled down even farther. But we'll definitely have things about it that will need shifting and changing, I'm sure. I think that the point regarding that face-to-face connection to create as much relationship as possible, because the reality is at some point or points in time in this year, we may be fully remote, maybe brief periods, there may be some longer periods, but whatever can be created in relationship between teachers and students is key. And even some plans and thought about daily connection for teachers with students who are remote, I think that is of high importance, along with safety. I mean, Mr. Leighton said it, but you know, obviously, I think that's something we need to vote on tonight as well as, I think Dr. Burnham can give a thumbs up, not around the face coverings as well, so that that's clear, that that's pre-K, that's our entire district. All of our students, pre-K through 12. And hearing that the majority of families as well as our teachers are in support of this, this is what the district is presenting to us with comprehensive, you know, plans that will become even more comprehensive. For me, the hybrid model is definitely the best plan for us at this time. And hearing all of us, it sounds like we'd be ready to vote. What's, are there any other questions or anything that anyone wants or needs to say before we potentially move this? Ms. Kelly?
I'm just going to chime in. I don't know how I'm going to follow up everyone, but I have the same thoughts that, I just think that the reopening committee did a tremendous job of thoughtfully addressing all areas. There was obviously a lot of work that went into it and thank you very much to all members of that committee to really thinking through every small detail. I came into this fully aware of the amazing group of teachers we have in this community and my concern was their feelings going back into the classroom. And it was extremely reassuring to hear that the majority of our teachers want to get back into the classroom in some form or another. I think that developing the relationships between the students and teachers, especially after the kids being out of school for so long, is extremely important going forward because this is going to be an undoubtedly challenging year. And even just getting that small amount of time with, in front of a teacher, I think it's just going to really set the tone for the year. So I also truly believe that the hybrid model will allow families to make a decision on what's the safest and best mode of education going forward this year. So.
Any other questions or comments? Quite frankly, this will be, yes, Ms. Shapiro?
This is just a question kind of regarding the logistics of the vote. Will we be voting about the masks for pre-K through grade one? Before, after, with it, because that might impact some decisions.
I would suggest that we take that as a separate vote and we take that first.
First, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just want to ensure any other thoughts, questions, concerns. I want to make sure we all have an opportunity to speak and be heard and get all those questions answered that we need to feel comfortable in voting on both of these topics.
And additionally, I'll just add that, you know, it's become part of the norm of what we do. We monitor the public health conditions. If if we were to find any issues with health and safety relative to ventilation in a building or the metrics in the local area or the metrics across the state are trending in a way that isn't favorable. I mean what I say. The health and safety and well-being of our staff and our students is the most important thing. If I were at all concerned, I would request a special meeting if necessary to make the move to transition to a different model. Even if, given now that our school year for our students is not going to start until September 16, that's more than a month from now. If conditions change and I feel that we cannot open hybrid, I will be requesting an emergency meeting and making a different recommendation. The health and safety of our kids and our staff is just, we can learn in remote. We will do our very best job to provide high-quality teaching and learning in remote. It's not the preferred model, but it can be done. And if that's what it means to make sure that everybody's kept safe, then that's what we're going to do. So if conditions change at all, if I am uncomfortable at all with the safety of our staff and students, with the safety of our staff and students, I will be back in front of you with a different recommendation.
Any other questions, concerns? Then I will take a motion first on mandatory face coverings for grades pre-K through 12. Mr., Ms. Shapiro?
I'm Sophie Shapiro. I motion to, I move to vote on making face coverings mandatory for grades pre-K kindergarten and first grade.
Is there a second? It would, it would actually be pre-K through 12, Dr. Burnham, or are we just doing?
I think it would be best to just be very clear. It's inclusive, all grades.
Yeah. Is there a second? Mr. Leighton?
Brian Leighton, I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. And I will take a motion for a recommendation of the hybrid model for the school year 2020, 2021. Ms. Ashambo?
Carol Ashambo, I would like to make, to make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the beginning of the 2021 school year using a hybrid model.
Is there a second? Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly. I second that motion.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Could I also ask for us to go on record and make a motion that would require families opting for the full remote to complete a registration for full remote, or at least the first quarter, to be reassessed quarterly, as well as any families who intend to utilize bus transportation to complete a registration form for the bus transportation as well?
And that's okay to do all as one?
I think so.
Or do you want two separate?
Unless people feel that they want to separate the vote.
No.
No.
I will take a motion then. Ms. Ashambo?
I will make a motion that families that decide to use remote learning for their children, register to do so and fulfill on a quarterly basis. And also that those families that wish to use bus transportation, register to do so.
Is there a second? Mr. Leighton?
Brian Leighton, I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to public comment, open to any topic that the committee governs. Mr. Beardmore?
Evening.
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Beardmore.
First of all, Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street. First of all, I want to congratulate the administration, faculty, staff, union, parents, school committee members on making good progress, making difficult decisions, very well-thought-out decisions under extremely adverse and difficult circumstances. I think everybody should be commended on the work that they've done and the, the way we very proud of the work tonight. I do want to, I have been appointed, once again, by the Finance Committee to be the to the School Committee. And earlier today, I communicated the email with the superintendent and with Mr. Cassidy, requesting that we get a look at the budget ramifications of what's happened essentially since town meeting, where we believe we are today, and where we, perhaps where we anticipate where we might be in, in the coming months. I think that some people are relieved to have heard from the President of the Senate about the commitments to Chapter 70 that have been made over the course of the last week. I'm cautiously optimistic, but I'm, I'm also not sure, as the superintendent alluded to, exactly what is adequate funding to do what we need to do this year. So I'm looking forward to possibly hearing from Mr. Cassidy and more. I don't think tonight was the right forum. I think we needed to think operationally tonight, but I don't, but I do think that we also need to have a comprehensive financial look at, at what's going on, either in a school committee meeting, or in a finance committee meeting, or both in the, in the near future, and I'm looking forward to that conversation. Finally, I do want to comment, as a, as a parent and a citizen, I've made this comment at, at school committee meetings before. I may make them in perpetuity. I do think, and I hope this is a conversation we can have at a future meeting, I think that the order of your meetings and the way you handle public comment still leaves a lot to be desired. The opportunity for the public to comment only before they have the full understanding and the entirety of information proposed, action is taken, and then the, and then, and then there's opportunity for comment after, I think, kind of perverts the intentions of Robert's rules, certainly, which this town has historically run its meetings on. And I think that there's an opportunity to go back to the old style of presenting new ideas under new business, and then voting on them in a subsequent meeting under old business, and giving the public the opportunity to ask questions and comment and, and share new ideas or perspectives or information that may not have otherwise been known. And I'll be back to you with more on that at a future meeting. But suffice to say, other than that, good job tonight, and looking forward to future discussions on these topics.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Ms. Adams?
Yes, I just had a couple of public comments. One is just make sure during the training phase, in terms of technology and expectations at home, to be very careful where things are being graded now. If there's Google classrooms and things, I live in a fairly small home, four children, and I'm running Google, I'm, I'm running Zoom things through work. Sometimes it's not feasible to meet certain technology demands, whether it's, you know, luckily, I do have good internet, but that may be an issue for some people. But when I hear a lot about logging on and remote learning from home, there may not even be enough spaces where everybody can use audio without interacting with other children's online needs. And then obviously worried about internet safety and also confidentiality. I had a situation where my child was in a reading group, and they were having trouble, and then another child was having trouble. And I started to think, who else is watching my child? Well, every parent, anybody else in the background, if everybody's at home. So there's so many concerns here, and it is very difficult to get decisions and things and not have had the reopening meetings, have more interaction, because these are questions I have about, you know, confidentiality with kids logged into the computer and not knowing who else can see them. So that's just one concern. I have a lot of worries about technology, probably because I'm not very good with technology. And then the other comment I wanted to make was the idea of children doing extracurriculars who have opted for remote. And my thought was, some people may opt for remote, not just based on concerns of COVID. People may opt for remote because they don't think their children can do the masking. People may opt for remote because they don't know if their children are going to be able to deal with spatial circumstances of keeping their distance. So somebody may choose remote and not be concerned about contracting. So to put it, to categorize everybody, to say that because they chose remote, they're afraid to be around people. No, they may be choosing remote because something about the model isn't working, but they still may want their children to have enrichment. So I just want to have people reconsider their idea that staying home assigns a certain set of beliefs. There may be a variety of reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. 108 Highland Street, here in town. More, I guess, one thing I didn't hear related to the hybrid model, I know there was some sports and extracurricular discussion and so forth, but it, some future time, maybe clarification on how a hybrid model is going to work with extracurriculars, in particular sports, given the cohort model. Cohort A and Cohort B conceivably would have students there participating in extracurriculars, and how that's going to play out, I guess, you know, with, 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 you know, the separation of students and so forth, just something for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any more hands raised. Anyone on the committee?
No.
All right, then we will move on to reports. First report, Athletic Advisory Committee. Mr. Leighton?
Yes, thank you. So the Athletic Advisory Committee was trying to be proactive in case there is a fall season. We had met July 13th over Zoom. We had mentioned that we're still waiting on the MIA guidance and guidelines that Dr. Burnham had discussed. We did approve football fundraisers that are socially distanced, a yard sale, selling gold cards and a car wash, and also a socially-distanced golf raffle as well, with all guidelines in place. We are planning to meet again on August 31st for any other additional fall fundraisers that teams want to still try to do.
Mr. Leighton, and quick question about that. Was there anything brought up regarding calendars? For fundraising?
Not yet, not yet, but there are, I think there will be some for the fall at the next meeting.
So there was nothing banning those? Calendars as being, as fundraisers?
It's not door knocking. They didn't want to do door knocking.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks for the clarification. And Finance Committee?
Alrighty.
Ashambo?
This is Carol Ashambo, and on the 15th of July, the Finance Appointing Committee met and reappointed Jason Mione for a three-year term, appointed Chris Manad for a three-year term, and Heather Sroka for a one-year term. So they have a full Finance Committee and two new members. On the 23rd of July, they had an organizational meeting where Terry Birchfield, once again, will be the chairperson, Peter Beardmore, the vice chair, and as he already told you, he once again is our school committee liaison to the Finance Committee. And their next meeting, oh, they continued their discussion about debt management. That's going to be a really major topic through the fall. And their next meeting is the 13th of August.
Thank you. And Policy Subcommittee? We have not, Policy Subcommittee has not met.
Not met. Looking forward to it.
PTO as well has, has not met since the end of the school year. School councils have not met since the end of the school year, just going down the line here. Capital Planning has not met. Wellness Advisory has not met. Paccel has not met. Lifelong Learning Advisory has not met. TC Passio's Building Design Committee, Mr. Leighton?
Yes, yeah, that was quick. So we met on July 29. There was a selectman change, so Michael Ray Jeffries now is taking the spot for Damon McQuade. The chair is still Greg Roy, the vice chair is still Dave Blatt. We have a new secretary, Tanner Cole. The architect has moved forward interviewing some personnel in regards to their, their space. There's also been an extensive report done on the building conditions. They also discussed delaying the traffic study due to the, the school traffic unknowns. So we'll see how that goes, and our next meeting is August 17.
Well, we've come to the final item on our agenda, which is adjournment. I do want to ask, we typically have this on our agenda, topics for future discussion. Does anyone have a topic just before we, before we adjourn the meeting that they want to see at a future meeting? Ms. Shapiro?
I guess just to have it on the record, we were going to talk about the relationship between like students going remote and being able to participate in extracurricular activities. I think that's definitely something we should talk about. I don't know if we should put that here, but.
All right. Anyone else? All right, then, we are up to adjournment. I will take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, committee, thank you. By the way, there was a ton of work on our end to ensure that, that we had all the information we needed to, to be able to, to make a decision tonight. So thank you for all of that additional work. So I'll take that motion to adjourn. Mr. Leighton?
This is Brian Leighton. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 10:12 PM.
And a second? Ms. Shapiro?
I'm Sophie Shapiro, and I second that motion.
Roll call vote?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.